Good evening, and welcome to the regularly scheduled planning board meeting for August 5. Thank you everybody for coming. Can we have a roll call please?
Yes, Mr. Brown, Mr. Colton Maxx.
Here.
Mr. Lorna.
Here.
Mr. Rosner.
Yeah.
Mr. Hutt.
Yeah.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Torpe.
Here.
Thank you. And this is pursuant to Section 5, Chapter 231 PL 1975. This is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of regular meetings on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mailing the annual notice of regular meetings for 2013 to the South Orange Maplewood News Record and the Star Legend, December 2012, and by filing said notice in the office of the Village Clerk. Our first bit of business is the approval of the minutes for the regular meetings held on June 3, and a special meeting held on June 19, 2013.
I move that the minutes for the June 3 meeting be approved as submitted. I can't vote on the June 19, so I'll have to have two separate votes.
Okay, so we hear a second on that?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, they're approved. Michael?
I'll move the June 19 meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Sorry.
All approved? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention.
Thank you. Who's that? My, or is that you?
It's not me.
Not me? Okay. Thank you. We are going to hear two applications for complete list tonight. We're going to reverse the order that we have listed on the agenda. We are first going to hear case number 231, which is Luther P. Turner Jr. and Hazel A. Turner. This is Block 704, Lot 1, 14 Kingman Road. This is a minor site division. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the existing lot to create two lots with the intent to construct a one-family dwelling on the new lot. Can we hear from our planner Susan Gruel on your opinion of the completeness of the application?
Is the applicant here?
Is the applicant here? Oh, okay. Do I have... You come forward?
Yes, yes.
Okay, they're here. Yeah. They want to talk. No, you sit. You're okay.
We have, based upon our memo dated August 2, and this is purely for completeness, we recommend that the applicant be deemed incomplete. There's a number of items, including the checklist, that have not been submitted. It's both minor subdivision and a C variance approval, both. And we... So we would recommend that the board deem it incomplete until certain items that we've detailed in our... and summarized at the last page are submitted. I would note that this is in the Montrose Historic District, and as a result, this application, according to the ordinance, once this application has been deemed complete, it then is required to be submitted to the Historic Preservation Commission for action and review. And we've had this discussion as well. So I just would note that. I believe that the applicant is aware of that, and that's our recommendation.
Okay. Have you... Have the applicant seen your comments?
The applicant has seen the comments. I had a conversation this morning with the applicant's attorney, and who was... said that they would be submitting the information.
Okay. So with the applicant there, is there anything you want to say to address the board? The applicant for this... No?
No.
Okay. Board, do you have any comments on this?
I move the application be deemed incomplete.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do we take a roll call on that, or adj?
Okay, Mr. Colton Maxx?
This is that it be deemed incomplete, right?
That's correct, I guess.
Yes, incomplete.
Mr. Lorna?
Yes.
Mr. Rosner?
Yes.
Mr. Hutt?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And Mrs. Torpe?
Yes.
Maybe next time we do "not complete." Or say "complete" and "no." Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Susan. Next, on our agenda, we have case number 230. This is the Public Service Electric and Gas Company, Carol Jean N. Rotunda, Block 2303, Lot 12. This is, I think, for Fourth Street. This is a minor site plan and C variance. The applicant proposes to increase electric service capacity by upgrading and modernizing electric process equipment at the existing South Orange substation. So first, Susan, we will ask your opinion on the completeness?
Yes. We have completed a review for completeness July 17, 2013. Actually, our memo has both completeness and our comments. But in terms of completeness, we recommend that the application be deemed complete. And we go through the submission waivers. It was a thorough application in terms of completeness and submission.
Board, do you have any thoughts or comments on that?
Susan, is your memo dated July 26?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I must have the older one.
An older one.
July 26.
This side.
Excuse me.
No problem.
Thank you.
Michael?
I have a couple of questions at PSENG. You is here.
Well, we're gonna... If we... On the completeness or on the application?
Well, on the application, because there's a facility there right now that looks like a temporary facility right on the property line.
Why don't I... Why don't we hold that, and then they're gonna... If we're gonna hear them, if we feel complete, we'll hear them tonight.
Okay.
All right, so do I hear a motion on the completeness of this application?
Did Omlund also review it, or... And if so, was it for completeness or just for the application?
It was only for the application.
And we coordinate with Omlund, so we did have contact with them to make sure there was nothing that they felt for completeness purposes were significantly missing.
I just didn't want him to feel left out.
I'll move the completeness.
I'll second.
Okay, you hear a roll call on the completeness, please?
Okay, Mr. Colton Maxx?
Yes.
Mr. Lorna?
Yes.
Mr. Rosner?
Yes.
Mr. Hutt?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And Mrs. Torpe?
Yes.
Okay. Good, thank you. So, given the agenda for tonight, it's our feeling... It's my feeling that we can hear this case prior to our long-awaited applicant... Long waiting, I should say, Third and Valley Urban Renewal LLC. And so is it... Are you guys capable of presenting now, or are we in front of the time clock? Or... No, PSENG? Okay, coming up.
I know, this is really costing me because I'm using her easel now. For the record, I'm Glenn Keans. I'm here on behalf of the Public Service. The application tonight is pretty simple and pretty straightforward. We have a temporary trailer that has to come in because during the summer peak months, we're at about 125% of what the actual facility is able to deliver. So the reason that we're here tonight is we don't want to use that anymore. We had to do some studies, and we did the studies, and what you're seeing on this application is we would be replacing... We'd be placing in the area marked in pink on your plans a transformer and other equipment that would eliminate the need for the temporary facility that you have. That temporary facility is only brought on literally to cover the summer peak season because if we don't do that, you get brownouts and blackouts. So this is a way of making it permanent. We couldn't do it ahead of this because we had to study and figure out what the best alternative was to actually do it on a permanent basis. So that's question number one. Beyond that, though, we did serve everybody within 200 feet, and I assume Pat or somebody that notice was found to be in order?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And just for the record, because I can make this easier and faster than... So I'm not hogging all of Merrill's time. We also received copies of Omlund's report, which is dated July 25, 2013, and also a report from Susan Gruel dated July 26, 2013. I have one witness, so if I could get him qualified, or if sworn in, then I'll qualify him, and we'll go from there, Mr. Chairman.
Proceed.
Now, why don't you stay here?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give here this evening is the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Gene Rotunda with PSENG. I'm a licensing project manager.
Gene, keep your voice up. I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
4000 Padley Road in South Plainfield, New Jersey.
Okay, Gene, by whom are you employed?
PSENG.
And what's your position with PSENG?
I'm a licensing project manager.
And you have licenses in what?
I'm a professional engineer and a professional planner.
Little latter, Gene.
PE and a PP in the state of New Jersey.
And both of your licenses are valid as of tonight, is that correct?
Yes.
And you've been practicing engineering for how many years, or don't you want to fess up to that?
Over 30 years.
Over 30 years. And you regularly prepared... Before you went with Public Service, you regularly prepared site plans in private consulting, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if I told you that you did 100 applications, would I be underestimated?
Yes.
By many hundreds, right?
Yes.
And you're also a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes.
And you regularly prepare plans now for Public Service, but you've also regularly prepared plans before, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have Gene accepted as both a licensed professional engineer and a professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
We do, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. All right. Gene, are you familiar with the site?
Yes, I am.
I have put up a board that's been marked. I think it's... Is it identical to what the board has, Gene, except that this one is solid?
It's melted and laminated.
It's laminated. I don't know that we have to mark it, but if Pat wants it marked, we'll mark it.
A1, please.
Yes, sir. Okay, anyone is the site plan for the site, is that correct?
That's correct.
Would you please locate the site and describe its surroundings, Gene?
Yes, the property fronts on Fourth Street. It's at the end of a dead-end portion. It's paralleled by Conrail Railroad on its west side. On its east side is a commercial building, basically a self-storage facility. There are three residences to the north and Memorial Park to the south.
And by the three residences, you mean the ones down front, is that correct? Is this an odd-shaped white lot, Gene?
Yes, essentially, it's a flag lot. The flag pole portion of it accesses Fourth Street along the edge of the residential lots.
Could you describe the topography of the parcel?
The parcel's fairly flat. It's almost... There's a slight pitch toward the railroad and toward the road. There's not much... It's grade differential. It's almost 95% gravel, and there are foundations of existing structures and the building as shown on the plan.
Right, now, there are a couple of pre-existing situations on the parcel, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what are they?
The... Because of the flag shape of the lot, the lot frontage or lot width at the right-of-way is deficient. 30.01 feet is existing, 37 and 1/2 is required, so that's existing non-conformity. There's also a lot width at the setback, or interior lot width, which is 75 feet is required, and that same 30.01 feet is provided.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not so sure that we need variances for that. This lot's been in existence since the 50s. We put that in there. If we're directed to provide the testimony, we'll provide additional testimony on those, but they're pre-existing non-conforming situations as to the lot size, and it is a flag lot. It's been there since at least the 50s, we think even back to the 20s.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see. How do you get into the site? How wide is the drive, Gene?
The access... There's a gate up by Fourth Street, and there's also an access drive that's just primarily gravel. It's anywhere from 20 to 23 feet wide. There's some grass on either side, and then there's our station fence.
Okay. So you get inside, and then what's the circulation pattern of the site, Gene?
Well, I'm gonna... I'll trace it around, but essentially, when you access the site through the first gate, there's a second gate, and you head south along the railroad track, and continue along the railroad track to the back where our proposed equipment is, around the back where that proposed equipment is, and around through a... There's steel structures that aren't really shown. The foundations are on here, and you go around back to the north and back. I'm gonna trace it with my hand so I can work this way.
Thank you.
The description I just gave you, you're heading south, going around where the proposed equipment is, and then underneath the structure in front of the building, and then back out to Fourth Street.
Okay, there's no real... How many people visit the site? Because that was one of the issues in one of the reports.
Probably like once a week at most.
Once or twice a week, and it's just our people, nobody else comes on the site?
That's correct.
This is not a manned facility at all, is it?
No, it's an unmanned facility.
Okay. Now, you show two things in pink. Is that what we're proposing to put on the property?
Yes, there's also a flag out to the side of that. Those two things are a larger foundation with a smaller foundation in front of it, in the middle of it, and a small structure outside.
All right, and what are we proposing to place on the property, Gene?
That's basically what we call a unit sub. There was a question about the equipment that's out there now. That's a mobile version of that that's brought in to... When we have emergencies or when we have issues with capacity. So that equipment there, you'll see there's two structures. One kind of looks like a curb around a slab. The one that looks like the curb is basically a containment wall. It's about eight inches to a foot wide and about six to eight inches high. That's the subject of the variance for the rear yard. It's proposed at 23.5 feet to that corner to the property line along the park at one side and 25 feet on the east side. So on the south side, it's got a little skew to it. The reason why we have that is because the equipment will not fit any closer to the existing steel structures and equipment that's on the site. So we had no choice but to encroach slightly in that yard. So that equipment there is also shown in some other drawings which were submitted, which show profiles of the equipment. It's basically a 12-foot-high, 12 and 1/2 feet-high unit sub it's called. It converts... It's a 24-to-4 KV transformer. It's self-contained, and you'll see the small structure to the north. That's basically a foundation for a bus support, which is transfer... Helps carry the power from the unit up to the larger structure.
Bus support is basically a support structure, that's all. You guys call it a bus, but we can't find a definition anyplace, right?
We call it a bus.
But... I'm sorry. But they call it a bus, but go and try and find a definition of it anyplace. Wikipedia has no idea.
It's basically a structure that holds up either a wire. Whether it's... If it's a bus, it's a rigid wire. If it's a string bus, it's flexible, but it's a bus.
Now, within this containment... We're putting this containment in because we're putting a transformer on there, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the purpose of this transformer is to do... Is to do what? You heard my explanation. Was that accurate, or do you want to change it in any way?
Yes, it's accurate.
Okay. So we have a transformer, and how does a transformer cool itself?
There's mineral oil inside the unit and cooling fans.
And cooling fans. And the reason for the contained unit underneath is in the event that there were to be a leak, and it happens almost never, is that correct?
It doesn't... It's not supposed to happen, and that's there just as a safety factor.
As a safety factor. And it's just a containment in case that mineral oil were to leak out of the transformer, is that correct?
Yeah, and it's contained in there, and it can be retrieved without going further.
Okay. Why did we elect to put it there? Well, you said that. We have a variance. Do you have any other site plan testimony that you want to provide to the board?
Not really.
You know, just tell the board what the topography is compared to the surrounding sites.
Yeah, this site basically sits in a hole. If you... I know you can't get into the site because of the fence, but when you're at the end of Fourth Street, you can see that the railroad is elevated approximately six feet with a wall above it to the south. You can see from the self-storage side, which is just to the east, that there's a wall. It's over 10 feet high there, so we're down below that. And there's a grade differential that transitions from approximately that 10 feet to about six feet along the park side on the south. The facility is more or less that grade, but it does grade... It is still lower than the houses on the north side.
Now, this equipment that we're putting in, does it meet state ambient noise standards?
Yes, it does. It's below.
That was one of the issues that was raised in one of the reports. How visible is the equipment going to be from any surrounding properties, especially the parkland?
Well, I... The parkland, when there's no vegetation, you know, vegetation's not in bloom, you'll probably be able to see if you're standing in that one area. It actually says parking lot, but it's a part of the park here. If you're standing there, you'll see some benches, and I have a photo, which I took actually today, which I could pass around for the board members that haven't seen it.
Gene, did you take this picture?
Yes, I did.
Does it accurately reflect what's out there tonight?
Yes.
Or this afternoon, I guess, since it was under the light?
It was this afternoon.
I'd like to mark this as A2, Mr. Chairman?
This photo was taken from standing in this area, it says paved area, looking toward where the equipment is along that fence line. And the first thing you notice, you'll see in the photo, that you really barely see the fence because of the vegetation, but also the fence is much lower than... And most of the fence is below grade in that area. You're kind of looking over the fence.
And Gene, the actual containment unit is set 25 feet.
Excuse me, excuse me, we need you to talk to the microphone.
I'm so sorry. I thought I spoke louder.
That comes out. For us, it's loud enough, but the public...
I'll leave you. I'll leave you. My bad. The actual containment unit is set 25 feet inside that fence, is that correct, Gene?
Yes, actually the...
Actually, 23 and 1/2.
23 and 1/2 is the containment, and the actual unit itself is clear of the setback, but we're considering it all one structure.
Okay. Now, we're looking for a foot and 1/2 variance for the setback requirements. Are there... This is a C1 or a C2 variance. Are there unique characteristics on the site?
Well...
Practical difficulties?
Well, the site is basically fully developed with the existing station, and the actual structures that are out there, and you'll see the small foundations are there, they are the restriction for us placing additional equipment on that site. So that's one of the restrictions, as well as the access, which is the lane that we described around there.
And under the C2 criteria, are facilities such as this, have they been deemed to be inherently beneficial?
Yes.
And what is our charge? Is our charge to provide safe, reliable, and efficient electric service? Is that under the public utilities there?
Yes.
And are there benefits by allowing us to do this? What are the benefits to the public by allowing us to do this?
Well, this piece of equipment is going to eliminate the temporary structure that you see there today that comes out in the summer months. It's going to eliminate the capacity issues right now. The two circuits are 125% their capacity during the summer months. Without the equipment, we'd be well below that. So there's a... It eliminates the risk of the brownouts, rolling brownouts or blackouts.
Do you have an opinion as to whether this will negatively impact the public good?
I see no negative impact.
So you don't think it will have a negative impact at all on the public good?
No, I do not.
The variance is internal to the site, is that correct?
That's correct.
And does the fence kind of set the parameters for what is developed on the site?
Yes.
And have other boards actually determined that the fence is part of the principal structure so that that actually becomes the setback in certain instances? Not every board has done that, but some boards have done that also?
Yes, I've seen that.
Okay. How about the negative impact upon the zone plan or zone scheme?
The use is allowed in the zone, and I don't see any negative impact because of this rear yard encroachment. Essentially, that, as I said, it's gonna... If this was a parking lot, that containment area would look like a curb. So, you know, a curb wouldn't be regulated with that rear yard setback necessarily.
And did you have an opportunity to look at the master plan for South Orange?
Yes.
And is this consistent with the goals and objectives?
Yes.
And how is that? Is that by providing safe and efficient service and electricity so that they can develop and do redevelopment plans?
Yes.
Gene, did you have an opportunity to review the site plan ordinance for South Orange?
I did.
To the best of your knowledge, are these plans consistent with the site plan ordinance?
I believe so, yes.
Do you have any other testimony, Gene? Do you have any other testimony?
No.
Thank you. Okay, so we have questions for the speakers, please.
Your present facility that's there now, just out of curiosity, is that a permitted facility, or you just put it in?
The one you're talking about that's near the...
The temporary, that's on wheels.
That's... They call it a mobile. That comes in before the summer, and it comes out after the summer. So it's not permanent, but it's been there on a temporary basis permanently until this permanent equipment goes in.
But it's been there longer than 30 days.
I'm sure it has, yeah, because it wasn't there when I was here, before the leaves were down, but it's there now.
Because I believe you might need a permit if it's longer than 30 days. But that's an aside from that. Did you check the noise level? Because right next to it is the park, and right by where they have the unused shuffleboard courts, the kids are playing, and the noise level... And I understand the reason for the fan on your equipment to cool it, but that's pretty loud where the kids are playing. How... What's the loudness going to be? Is this equipment that you're putting in here going to be totally enclosed, or is it going to be open like the equipment that's there now?
It's going to be a different type of equipment. It's gonna... It's an enclosed facility, but it does have fans. And the rating on those fans are at six feet away from the actual unit. It cannot exceed 57 decibels. So it'll dissipate below that to the property line. So it's in compliance. That facility that's there, the temporary one, the mobile, I'm not exactly sure what it is, but it's much quieter than that.
It's also, right now, the mobile is visible to the park. And are you going... Thinking of adding additional shrubbery or screen?
Well, this unit's gonna be... That unit is actually closer to... If you'll see, there's like a white strip through here, and what that other... That other unit's not shown on here because when they surveyed it, it wasn't here.
No, no, it's right on the property line.
It's on the property line, but it...
I know where it is.
Basically, you see where the 30 is in the north, 56, 30, 18, along that property line by the park, or just really in line with Block 23 or the edge of that paved area. That unit sits more or less, it starts there, and it goes toward the... Where this unit is, and it's tucked up against the property line. The new unit is actually closer, you know, almost the whole distance that unit, closer to the railroad. That mobile unit is also longer. So this... The new unit, instead of being up in the area that you're talking about where there's a gap, you can out and see there's a little big gap in there on that photo. We're actually tucked down further, closer to the railroad, so we're behind a large tree that's shown here.
If I can... But can I add to your testimony? But the basic answer is you're not intending to do any additional screening?
Sorry.
There is no additional screening?
Not proposed, no, because the fence basically is... Where our property is so much lower, I don't think it would have an effect, and we have... It's all gravel on our side.
Well, in the winter, you do see it. I mean, you can see it now.
That's why...
You can see through it now.
Well, you can see the building in the winter. You can see the structure that's beyond the steel structure, yes.
The one... I guess the one issue that...
I have one last question.
I'm sorry.
Is this equipment going to be raised, so if you wind up having water issues, it's not going to affect this equipment?
Well, there... This is not a... You know, this is not a flood zone here, but it's up about two feet off the ground in the proposed equipment, so it's high enough that any localized flooding, which should be okay.
Is that two feet part of the 12-foot height?
Yes. There's a found... If you look at... There's actually a profile that shows the equipment set on top of another structure.
Sandy, so I have no idea. How did the equipment... How did this site do in Sandy?
This site was not affected in Sandy.
All right, thank you, Michael.
That's the new Sandy standard that we're hearing all the time.
Any other board questions for the board? Al?
Yeah. Just want to try to clarify the... You know, make sure I understand the need for the variance, the non-existing, you know, previous condition. You're... Can you explain to me what the... You know, on the drawing, I'm looking at the site plan, there is this long way area described as trench covered with metal sheets. What is that, and what is its purpose?
Those are... There's underground conduit cable underneath that, and those trench covers are there to access it, so there's underground utilities there. The site has a lot of underground utilities. Those just happen to have a cover on them so you can access them.
And you... And that is necessary for these as opposed to the others where there is no such trench?
I'm not sure if these... If this is related to this unit or another piece... Another part of the facility. That was... That's an existing part of it that's going to remain.
And your drawing shows that part of your wall... And I'm sorry, describe the wall to me again. It's how many inches high, by how many inches wide?
The... I have a... There was a drawing submitted with the application. Just bear with me for a second, I'll... The width is between eight, eight inches and a foot. I don't have the exact dimension, but it's within eight inches to a foot wide, and it sticks up approximately 68 inches high above the grade.
And I'm sorry, just excuse my ignorance, but the purpose of that wall, I mean, it seems relatively small and offensive. What is its purpose?
That's basically a containment pit, so that wall, it's almost like a basement that's below that, and it's filled with gravel. And anything, any chance that the mineral oil would leak, that it would contain it and we'd be able to retrieve it from that containment pit. So it's really a pit that's filled with gravel. It's just concrete structure.
Concrete filled with gravel.
So, but it looks as though part of that is going to be over the trench? That's how it shows on the drawing?
It does show as part of it, so I guess they would have to, you know, address that part of the trench. I'm not sure, you know, other construction wise, the construction team would take care of that.
I guess part of the reason I'm asking is, I mean, if I'm looking at the site, and I'm just wondering if you could explain to me. I see that there is a concrete structure which is close to the, I'm going to forget directions here, just at the top right portion of the wall.
Yeah, it has the dimension of 44.
Which is probably, which is probably why you feel you can't move that wall any further over towards, in that direction, so that you get the extra one and a half feet? Is that an accurate statement?
Well, it's not only that. The, believing, we tried to move that close to the structure. That structure, as well as the smaller foundations, are holding a steel structure that has different types of equipment on it and different voltages on, throughout that whole grid. There's basically a steel H-frame structure that runs across the site. We can't get any closer to that for a number of reasons. One is the foundation clearances. The other one is minimum distances we need from our equipment to that other equipment on the structure.
So even if you moved, what is it, southeast, I mean, even if you moved down the site, you couldn't, you couldn't get far enough down that you could possibly move slightly over? I mean, our goal is not to grant variances. I mean, that's, you know, the town set out the rules, we're supposed to have good reason for not doing it. And one of them would be that there's absolutely no other way of accomplishing your goal. So I just, my question is asking, is there any other way of accomplishing your goal that doesn't require us to grant a variance? The only other way I can see is possibly bringing it, whatever, south and east. So what would be the reason that you can't bring it south and east?
We, if we brought it south, we'd be closer to where, to the property lines, we'd make the, the park is to the south, so that would make it worse.
I'm talking in this direction.
You're talking about north?
North and west.
Talking about to the right side of the drawing, to the north?
What I'm talking about is, what I'm talking about is going down. Essentially, if I'm looking at, if I'm looking at south and east, south is that way, east is that way, so I'm trying to split the difference.
If we tried to, we can't go any further east because the corner of the containment and the structure is, would start encroaching into the access, the access drive. There's a loop access drive that comes around that services not only the equipment, but the building. It's hard to see, but if you look, you'll see there's small foundations. See that trench that you were talking about?
Yeah.
Well, at one end of the trench, you'll start seeing foundations that run to the north or toward Fourth Street. All those have steel supports on them, holding structures above. So we can't go closer to the east to, for that reason. And even if we could, we don't have enough room to do it, you know, only a couple of feet. This is as far east as we could go to make that structure clear that path and get the turning radiuses for our trucks that would come in there. So there's no room to go east. The only option we really had physically on this site would have been to encroach closer to the property line so that we could maintain access. So this is as far north and as far away from the property line as we could get without, with this design. We even looked into skewing the containment, and we couldn't really find a solution here to eliminate the variance.
Okay.
Okay.
Susan, do you have any questions?
Um, my-
Omen?
What I think I heard in terms of the, your testimony, is that the containment wall as such, which is like six inches, six to eight inches in height, is that what?
Yes.
Above grade.
Is the technical, excuse me?
Yes, above grade.
Yeah, above grade, is what is technically non-compliant with-
That's correct.
The setback.
That's correct.
That the structure as such is within the setback, the 25-foot setback. Is that accurate?
That's correct. The equipment itself is clear of the setback, but that containment wall is encroaching. It's going to appear like a curb when you're out there because you won't know how far deep it goes. It's filled with gravel.
Okay. I, my, my comment would be that it appears to me that there could be more buffer between a better fence that could be provided between the park area. And I know that the photo, that in the winter, I mean, in the summer, it may be obviously more screened because of the vegetation, but I would suggest that a fence there would be a reasonable mitigation to the variance and-
We could certainly work with your professionals. The one thing you do need to understand is we can't put any landscaping, anything, inside the fence. You have to be outside the fence. If you want, we could certainly work with Susan or Chuck's office and come up with something if you thought that was appropriate.
Excuse me, why can't you put it inside the fence?
Because it's all part of the, it's all part of the equipment. There's all kinds of things under the ground. You can't do plantings inside the fence.
Even on the property line?
On the electric substations, once you're inside the fence, it's all part of the facility. That's why I said, that's why I said in other municipalities, that fence constitutes the actual principal structure, because it's all integrated, it's all connected, so that there's no shorts and nobody's getting lit up because a kid wanders too close to it. It's very involved, but the fact is, the fence sets the parameters.
Okay. Board, Chuck, anything?
Can you just summarize again that temporary, you have a temporary transformer generator out there right now?
It's basically a mobile sub, or a temporary unit sub like the one we're proposing. This one is on basically a mobile, it's mobile because it's on wheels and we drive it in there.
And you will no longer need that once this is constructed?
That's correct. This is replacing that.
I also agree that maybe additional fencing or buffer could be placed along-
Okay. Board is done with their questions of this witness, and our professionals, anybody from the public have any questions? You.
How are you?
How are you?
I guess you have to state your name, dear.
Janine Bauer, 416 Clark Street, South Orange. Did we meet out at the property and do an inspection a week ago on Friday?
Yes, we met on a Friday. It was you and I.
And at that time, did I explain that the village is attempting to keep a 15-foot open area between the property line consisting of the railroad and everything eastward in order to preserve a right-of-way for a bicycle and pedestrian path?
Yes, you did.
And is the, is that area actually open behind this, in other words, going westward, behind this facility, with the exception of just the little area of the curb where it encroaches?
Yes, the offset from this equipment to that property line is 24, 24.6 feet, so we're well clear of that. The setback for that side yard is only five feet, the required setback. So we're in excess of almost 20 feet.
Okay, thanks.
Good. Any other questions from the public for this witness? No, thank you very much. Does that conclude your testimony?
Then to add that maybe in response to the fence, we do have a green slotted thing that's a different material, and it might be appropriate. We could certainly provide copies of that, and actually a sample to Susan or Chuck or whoever, if in fact that pleases you.
We will please us, okay. Thank you. Does that conclude your testimony?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Board, do anybody have a, make a resolution?
I'm just not, I'm just, the only question I have is lacking the information on the fencing. I'm not exactly sure what to offer as a resolution. I mean, normally, when we've talked about this in the past, we've, you know, there's been at least some general understanding of what it's going to be prior to voting on a resolution. You know, so I don't have a problem with putting something together as long as the professionals that are going to have to deal with it after this planning board has had its say are able to deal with it. I know Sal, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but sometimes you've, you seem to balk at being put in a position of having to make decisions and interpret what the board might or might not find acceptable, and to make decisions about what's aesthetically pleasing or not aesthetically pleasing or what have you. So I don't mind putting together a resolution as long as I'm not, you know, as long as it's, you know, clear enough that, you know, the professionals can deal with it, so.
I don't even have an issue if you wanted to buttress the landscaping on the property line on the park side, as long as, you know, it's high enough and large enough to screen your facility from the park.
Sir, we're happy to go either way. The fence that I just talked about, we put it up in Englewood, we put it up in Teaneck in places that were much more visible than the site. Didn't have a buffer at all to the road, and the boards really, really liked it, so.
I would personally prefer fence more than greener.
Are you talking about a chain link fence, a slotted chain link fence?
No, no. It's a special kind of material. It's not chain link. It's thicker, it's about this thick, and it has cross slots going this way. There's no plastic in between it. It's, it's just a good-looking, you would put it at your house. It's a brand new thing.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the application with the subject to that the professionals agree on whether we're going to put landscaping on the property line and PSENG picks up all of the expenses for that, and certainly high enough to screen the facility, or a fence high enough on PSENG's property to screen the facility.
As far as the planting goes, I think they made it clear that they couldn't put the plantings inside the fence.
No, no. I said on the park-
Outside the fence would then be on the village's property, and I don't know that the planning board has the authority to, you know, direct the applicant to plant.
There's other issues, there's other issues with maintenance of-
Correct.
Up to greener, they put up. I would defer to, I would prefer to stick with a fence as a subject to the village's engineer or professional.
That's fine.
Okay. Now, the fence, typical fence limitations are six feet. The existing fence is how tall?
Seven feet.
Seven feet. And the fence we've been putting up to accomplish what you're talking about is eight feet.
Okay.
And it's called, it's called Evergreen, right?
To put an eight-foot fence, though, I would recommend that the board agree to an eight-foot fence, because typically a six-foot fence-
I'll amend the motion to-
Agree to your agreement.
Agree to the eight-foot fence.
I'm sorry?
That you'll review it, but we'll agree to higher.
Right, but the eight-foot fence would be in violation of what's typically allowed for fence height.
Right. And just to clarify, this is to replace the existing fence? And it will not have barbed wire on the top?
It will not have barbed wire, but it's only on the park side.
Right, oh, I-
And it's called forever green, Gene?
It's called forever green, yes. I'm not, but I'm not sure about the, right now, it's a seven-foot fence with the barbed wire. I think he mentioned that, you know, going to eight feet is an encroachment. The intent usually is to take the fence, and that these are woven in between to fill it, and it basically looks like a solid green, but it doesn't look like plastic, it looks like, like shrubbery. That's why it's called forever green. It's very attractive, and it's very good at keeping, you know, being a perfect-
My suggestion is we can work that out. We understand what you want. I've already thrown out two examples, and we can figure that out if you're comfortable.
And I would think seven feet would be enough to block the vision when you're in the park.
So we have to give permission to do it higher than, as of right? All right, does anybody want to make a motion on that? Can you simplify it?
Simplify, approve the application, subject to a seven or an eight-foot fence is deemed necessary by township engineer and that material that you just stated.
A green type fence. Here are a second?
Sure, second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Okay. Ms. Coltemax?
Yes.
Mr. Larnor?
Yes.
Mr. Rosner?
Yes.
Mr. Hutt?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Torpe?
Thank you very much. Thank you, board.
What's the name of the fence again?
You'll provide that to us?
But I also gave you the examples when you're writing up that we put-
Counsel, you'll provide that to our professionals, that name, okay? Thank you very much.
You should also provide it to counsel for the resolution.
And counsel for the resolution. Name of that. Have you-
Provide me a way to describe-
The fence, or the material, or the actual fencing. All right. Nice.
I thought it was open to the public. No, it's not. I'm not going to, I'm not going to leave here.
I can open it up. I can certainly open it up.
The question, the question was, as a matter of procedure, we have, we allowed her to question the witness, but we did open it to the public to make statements, so.
I can open it up, not a problem. Let's finish.
Sorry. Does that mean the vote has taken place or not taken place?
It's not an objection, I, so there would be no prejudice, but thanks a lot. I just want to, Janine Bauer, 416 Clark Street. I just want to remind the board that we're trying to keep a 15-foot right-of-way down the railroad path with the idea of, you know, if there's future development in the area beyond the park, Lackawanna Place and so on and so forth, which, you know, clearly seems blighted to me at least, that there's a way to get through there. Since this application preserves that, it's not a problem, and I do not object to it, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to remind the board of that.
Thank you.
Do we need to revoke it as a matter of procedure?
We're going to ask the board at this point to please take another vote. Is there any other public comments?
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
I will re-move the motion.
And I will resecond the motion.
And we will take a new roll call.
Okay, Ms. Coltemax?
Yes.
Mr. Larnor?
Yes.
Mr. Rosner?
Yes.
Mr. Hutt?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And Mr. Torpe?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and thank you for hearing us.
So we are going to, we're all warmed up, ready to go. We're going to take a, start exactly at eight for you guys, okay? We'll just stretch ourselves, and then we'll convene in five minutes. Five minutes, board. [applause] Make me.
Can I bet?
No.
No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and thank you for hearing us.
So, we are going to, we're all warmed up, ready to go. We're going to take the, start exactly at eight for you guys, okay? We'll just stretch ourselves and then we'll convene in five minutes. Five minutes, board.
Make me.
Can I bet?
No.[413.12]
Types of what someone has referred to as rondelle, that the round parking sign with the letter, which we've now requested be, rather than requesting forty square feet, down to twenty square feet, which gives us some flexibility in terms of the design and also, we think is adequate to, given where the height would be and where we hope people will see it. So that was one of the items. Again, we've addressed, we think, the questions, and I can go through them. We'd like the letter marked so that that information is part of the record, or we can have the witnesses who address those variants, various issues, address the items that are within their expertise, or only those that the board wishes to discuss at your discretion.
I think we should do the latter. I trust the board has read back through the letters, so if they have any comments on the answers, I think, let them ask that. I have one question for you regarding the, and maybe for Sal regarding the new square foot for the signage. This may be a naive question, but does that mean both sides are ten square feet, or, because it's a blade sign, I'm not sure, and it has signage on both sides, I'm just, how?
No, well, the nine square feet is the permitted square footage of a blade sign.
Doesn't matter. It's not the signage amount, it's simply the size, physical size. Got it, okay. So I think, Board, that would be best, and our professionals, if we just add, or drill down on it. If there's anything that wasn't answered to your satisfaction, this is the purpose of this last meeting, is to raise our last questions. And so, if you have anything from these questions and answers, please, I'm sure Michael will have to.
I still do.
Bring it on.
I think we're on. Yeah, it's on, okay. I read the report and some of the answers to the questions. I still have some concern on the size of the parking spaces and turning lanes in the garage. It is tight. And my question relates to, I believe, and not knowing what your agreement is with the village, I believe the village shares in the maintenance and common area and costs of that garage. And my question is, are they going to share in the insurance premiums at the same time?
I know that the agreement, the management agreement between the parking authority and the applicant has not been executed yet. So there are still issues that are not resolved.
Well, is that a cost that's going to go into the common area charged for the garage?
Is insurance going to be one of the elements of common, the common expense? We would anticipate it would.
Okay. Then my comment is, is it worth giving up some spaces to reduce the insurance claims that you're liable to have from dings, dents, and accidents based on the shortness of the space in the aisles?
I think-
I pose that to the board.
I mean, are you saying the shortness of the space, you're talking about the width or the length of the space?
The width, the width. Not the length. The length, I have no problem.
Can I just ask Sal a question? Because we talked about this a couple of years ago. And you said when it's commuter parking and people aren't pulling in and out, eight and a half feet is considered okay. It's more, the concern is much more short-term parking. For instance, the twenty-nine spaces, where people might be pulling in and out every couple of hours.
Yeah, and Chuck probably could speak to this, too. I believe there is more of a concern when you have high turnaround. If there's more cars coming in and out and there's more parking, obviously, there's more risk involved in the now.
So for the twenty-nine spaces, it would seem to be the real concern, because people pull in for a commuter space, they pull in and they don't pull out to the end of the day. It's, you know, one in, one out, which is the point that was made several years ago when we were looking at other projects. But the twenty-nine spaces, which I can definitely see the problem, where you have people pulling in and out, and it's more of an issue. But what are the width of the spaces now in the commuter space, in the lot?
Nine by eighteen.
Nine by eighteen.
Nine by eighteen.
We have one lot that's eight and a half, though, right?
I mean, there may be a few spaces that are, that are less than nine.
Usually for compact cars, spaces are-
We don't-
I don't have the exact count.
I have a question.
Yeah, I've got a number of questions.
Can we stick with that, though, for a second?
Sure.
If I were to ask a question, just as a follow-up. I just want to understand the nature of the agreement. And I know it hasn't been fully negotiated, but you, obviously, the applicant is comfortable with the eight and a half feet width. But let's assume for a moment that we're not, just for, you know, just for assumption purposes. Who is responsible for, if there was an insurance claim, who is respons, who will be, I mean, I know they can, somebody can sue anybody under the sun, but who, is there any indemnification anticipated one way or the other? I mean, is this ultimately going to be the owner's responsibility? Because if so, then how about it? Eight and a half feet, and if there are any costs involved with these lawsuits that may or may not occur, then you can bear the responsibility and I consider the matter closed. But if, if the municipality is going to bear some responsibility for it, then that's when the question becomes a little bit more pointed, at least for me. So I'm curious, will, will the owner stipulate to indemnifying the municipality for accidents that will occur within the parking structure?
But how do you know that they're-
How do I know it?
Per the, related to the width of the aisle.
I'm sorry? I don't, I'm, I-
How do you narrow that down?
I'm just, I'm trying to understand the nature of the relationship. I'm not saying it has to do with that particular item. I mean, I'm saying that-
Question is whether it has to do with the planning board.
Oh, it has to do with the planning board?
Does this happen?
Well, because, because ultimately, isn't a part of this to ensure the safety of the, you know, of the, of the residents, and also to protect the interests of the municipality? And in both of those cases, I think this question is relevant. I mean, if the council disagrees, then I'll withdraw my question, or withdraw, you know. Patrick, am I out, is this out of line?
Certainly, not out of line to ask the question.
Okay.
I'm here with the applicant.
I'm not sure if you're asking me a question. I'm certainly, I'm quite sure that they've made no determination that they're going to indemnify the municipality. And I think all of this presumes that there's something wrong with the size. I think part of what we've provided you is an indication that what we've provided meets current industry standards that our designer follows. So I think implicit in the comments that you're making is some understanding that we are not meeting. And I think I, if we didn't meet industry standards, then I could see the concern that's being raised. I think this is a determination that, you know, in terms of those issues, that should be left to the trustees. The size of the spaces is not a surprise. There have been discussions with representatives of the municipality with regard to the size of the, the spaces in the, in the structure. So I'm not sure what, you know, if, with regard to the, I'm not sure how many spaces on the twenty-nine we would lose.
Not just the twenty-nine.
The twenty-nine spaces.
I thought you said the twenty-nine were already nine feet. Did I misunderstand?
Maybe.
Maybe.
No. They're eight-six.
Okay. Well, I, I wasn't asking about the twenty-nine. I was asking generally. So I'm just trying, I mean, I, I'm trying to understand the nature of the relationship as it relates to the management and maintenance of the garage, of the parking structure. And if you could clarify that for me, it would be helpful in understanding what it is. I mean, I, ultimately, I can listen to the debate back and forth as to whether or not we should grant the variance. And there could be arguments made either way. The question, but I'm just trying to figure out what the implications are of the decision, whether or not to approve or not approve an argument one way or the other. If the implication is that the municipality could potentially bear greater financial responsibility for what may or may not be increased number of accidents as a result, or dings, or whatever, as a result of this, then that, I think, is, is relevant. So I'm, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Why would the municipality be at risk? That's what I'm just trying to-
Well, I don't, I don't understand, that's what I'm trying to understand. I don't understand the nature of the-
Why would the municipality be at risk? That's what I'm just trying to get to. The parking authority makes an agreement with, or any parking authority, any parking company makes an agreement with the building. How does the municipality get involved in that deal?
Well, what, I don't understand, what is the nature, explain the nature of the relationship between the owner of the building and the, and the municipality. There's a redevelopers' agreement, there is an agreement that's going to be reached with the parking authority. Is it just that the owner, the owner owns the building, is fully responsible? I heard discussion of joint maintenance and so forth. That's why I raised the question. If that's not the case, then I withdraw my question.
But I think what the applicant was saying, which is maybe the, the point that's, you know, worth repeating now, is that if we're doing everything within the standards that exist and that are professionally accepted, which we seem to be doing, then there would be no cause for someone to bring any action against the parking authority or the municipality, which are two separate entities. So I think that if, we're talking about an eight, was it eight foot, six inches, or, you know, and that was the standard, and we were saying, well, we could squeeze in some more spaces if we do one inch less on each, and we're going to take that risk. But we're not doing that. We're doing something that is, by, as far as I've been supplied with information about this, up to what is professionally accepted as a standard for parking lots. So we're not deviating from anything else. And I'm, you know, I'm just not sure.
It's not a, it's not a parking lot. It's a garage. So you're, let's not confuse-
But let me also clarify what it is we're asking for. Your ordinance with plan does permit eight-foot-six-inch spaces. The width in and of itself is not what's prohibited. It is the combination of eight-foot-six inches with a twenty-three-foot drive aisle, rather than twenty-four. So you're talking about a, six inches for each way, from each of the aisles in terms of the driving. And I think what was presented to you was, under the standards, I'm certainly not the traffic consultant, I can pretend, but our designer is here and who provided the information that we put into the letter, to indicate that the, the total area that was, or whatever, the, the drive aisle plus the space, does meet the standards of the industry. So again, it's not the eight-foot-six inches, even from your ordinance, that's not permitted. It's the combination of eight-six plus the drive aisle, which is a foot less. It's two ways. You're talking about six inches each way.
I, I appreciate the clarification, and I didn't mean to oversimplify it by suggesting it was the only, the eight-foot-six width of the space. It's the combination of the two, but that still doesn't really change the underlying question. I guess part of it, what I'm looking at, first of all, if somebody sues, they're going to sue everybody under the sun. And if the municipality played any role, I would assume, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, there are lawyers in this room, maybe they can comment on it, but if, but you're going to go after the deep pockets, and the municipality is, well, a pretty deep pocket.
I can assure you that we do not have-
Okay, you don't have any money. Okay. So, but, but, but the other thing is, is that this is a product of, in all seriousness, this is a product of a redevelopers' agreement. And I look to your, I look to your letter on page two, when you talk about what the impact would be of increasing the size of the spaces. You start off by saying, in the first full sentence, the loss of spaces is approximately seventeen to the public commuter uses, excuse, users, which results in two-hundred-and-forty-three spaces. It's your next sentence that I'm going to focus on. It should be noted that this is less than the two-hundred-and-fifty-five spaces agreed upon between JR Co. and the Village and the redevelopment agreement for this site. Meaning that what you're, what you're basically putting to the planning board is, that if you, if you say back to us, hey, we want it to be nine feet, then the redevelopers' agreement is in, I'll call it breach, but it, or, you know, and, and that's, you're creating a problem by that. Meaning, you're, you're, you're providing us with an argument that has to do with the, with a direct negotiation that took place between, or is taking place, between the municipality and the developer. The concern being that if somebody later says, well, it was something that was not just that the developer developed on their site, but there's a maintenance agreement, there, and there is an agreement that, a redevelopers' agreement, that made it so that the eight and a half feet was the only way to achieve that, therefore, municipality, you bear some responsibility. That's, that's how, now, if these connections are tenuous or, or nonexistent, I'm not an attorney. I'm just trying to make sure I understand, and I want to make sure that as a member of this planning board, that I'm not doing something which is going to somehow, somewhere down the line, put the municipality in financially difficult position.
I would think, Harold, though, it's the answer, because you said there were lawyers in the room, so I'm going to step up.
Okay.
I would think that if the design criteria is one that's accepted by the industry, which the evidence is, then there'd be very little cause of concern for whoever the owner was for designing in accordance to an industry standard. So that the-
We could talk about that a little bit, what the, go into a little depth about what the industry's accepted standard is.
I was going to-
Besides what they write.
That's correct. I was going to ask that. That was my question.
No, I'm not qualified to go into the-
No, no.
Things and answers to that.
Yeah, my next question with that, you quote industry standard of third edition 2011. Is there a later standard now?
Why don't we introduce Todd Helmer, Timothy Housen Associates?
More recent standard? No, there's no, there's no more recent standard.
Is there another code or another industry that specifies standards for garages?
Yeah, I mean, that, that one was by the National Parking Association. The International Parking Institute is another guideline that's out there that is consistent with the NPA.
When you say consistent, is it identical, or?
Well, I can't say it's identical.
Okay. I mean, there are other standards out there that talk about sizes of spaces-
Right.
-in parking garages.
That's right.
And you've only cited one.
I've cited it because that's, that's the one in the industry that is most credible and widely used as, as parking planners and designers.
In other words, you didn't cherry pick all the standards and just find the one that fits your case.
What's that? I'm sorry.
You didn't cherry pick all the standards and find the one that fits your case and use the, you used an industry leader, the standard of standards is what you're telling us.
Correct, yeah.
Alan? I don't have any other questions this time.
No, not at all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm glad you're putting in the camera. And I'm glad you feel that our parking authority has got engineering capabilities, the design. I'm glad you're putting in the generator. Now, let's talk about traffic. I happened to be at Thirdin Valley when I went to look at the PSENG site. And Thirdin Valley, three o'clock in the afternoon, heading north on Valley, there were two cars waiting to make a left turn. And there were between ten and fifteen cars stacked up behind the cars trying to make a left. They now had to pull out of line and go around those cars, waiting for traffic to clear. There is no left lane, there is no left turn signal.
You're talking on Valley Street?
On Valley.
Going north.
Okay. Now, let me just finish the scenario. On Third, heading towards Valley from Sloan, at about three-thirty, three-forty, there were about nine cars stacked up, waiting to get through the light. And that was coming almost past, because they're not stacked toe-to-toe. There's intervals between them. And that was stacked way pa, or past, where you would have your entrance into the parking garage. And my concern is, you have a left lane that I think will accommodate a stacking of, what, a couple of cars? Two cars, I think the testimony was?
Bring the traffic app. Get going, and then we'll bring the, whatever.
And, and my concern is that you got a backup on Valley coming to make a left, you got cars coming up Third, trying to make a left or a right, and the garage is a little bit blocked. And that's my concern. And in the, in your reply, you're assuming that, since Valley is county, that they're going to make the corrections. Well, I, you know what, we all know what the word assume means, and I'm just concerned.
Say that again. I just missed the last, what is it you think we're assuming?
That the signalization's going to change at that intersection.
The conclusion assumes that the proposed timing modifications, to which Essex County has agreed, are implemented as part of the project. I mean, if Essex County doesn't do it, then the situation becomes worse. And again, I don't know what all those modifications are going to mean.
I should tell you that we are going to be the ones implementing those changes. We're not relying-
You're talking Third Street, he's talking Valley, or you're talking Valley Street?
I'm talking both. Third, Valley and Third.
Okay, let's do maybe one at a time.
Okay, well, that's my comment.
Why don't we bring up-
You have to separate Valley from Third. They're two different-
Okay, well, no, I understand.
Let's bring up your traffic consultant. And we, I think, ought to separate these two issues. I think the first thing I might-
I don't know if the problem gets, I don't know if the problem gets better or if it gets worse. The problem's there already. I just-
I know it is.
I don't know that the problem will be any worse or better when, when it goes on, because it's usually very short. You know, two traffic light cycles, usually the problem's cleared up. And I lived over there for long enough.
They say it'll be slightly worse.
What?
They say in the letter it'll be slightly worse.
So, why don't you start with your concern about what happens at Valley Street?
Okay, I think you heard, I think you heard what I said.
The upgrade of the signal there, because you're, you're, part of your description implies a future upgrade of that light at the intersection of Valley and Third. And his, I think, the board member's concern is that if that doesn't occur, or if you assume it's going to occur and it doesn't occur, what are we left with?
And, and does it include a left turn signal?
I assume it will. What's they're going to spend their money?
Why don't we-
Yep.
But yes, we can ask that question. Yes.
And we are associating, record once again, and then the actual question.
Sure.
Good evening. My name's Miguel Gavino. I'm traffic engineer for Dewberry Engineering Inc. I believe there's, from what I, from what I heard, there were like three points that I'd like to cover and make sure that I do cover what you had mentioned. And if I miss anything, please let me know. First item is your observation about what you saw at about three, three-thirty in the afternoon at Thirdin Valley. You've noticed a queue of vehicles on the northbound approach. I believe you mentioned two left turn vehicles. We're trying to make that turn westbound on Third. And cars were queued up behind it. And at least, I think you also made mention of the fact that you observed some vehicles wanting to go through to have made the turn around, and there's two left turn vehicles.
I think that was me. No.
Oh, oh, sorry. Okay. And then separately, I think you were describing a queue situation also in the westbound direction on Third Avenue approach to Valley. Okay. Now, let's see. And then you were also associating that, or making a connection to some degree, that at the site access on Third, we actually have allowed for a fifty-foot storage, which, correctly you recall, would accommodate two vehicles. Okay. But of course, just talking about the site access, the two stor, the, the length of two storage for a westbound left turn into the site is actually appropriate, or is, is adequate for the number of vehicles that we expect to be making that left turn. And of course, the idea of providing that left turn lane is to make sure that they don't block the eastbound vehicles going westbound on Third. And so those vehicles can just bypass the left turning vehicles. Back to Thirdin Valley, however, the, the fact that you did observe those left turn vehicles, and in some cases, blocking the northbound through, I mean, that occurs today. And I think what we've, what we've mentioned is that by re-timing the signal, and our proposal to, that we submitted to the county, by re-timing the signal, then we would be able to achieve a level of service in similar conditions that exist today. Now, the one other point to make on that northbound approach, though, is that to the extent that the right hand, on that northbound approach, the right-hand side has parking, okay? If you want to ensure that levels of service are improved in the northbound direction, one concept that could be evaluated may be to prohibit parking for a distance, say about a hundred feet, south of the approach on, on that northbound leg. And that way, if you do have vehicles that, two or three vehicles that want to make that northbound left turn, there's opportunity for northbound-through drivers, or northbound-right turn drivers, to be able to get around them. Because the width of that northbound approach is sufficient for two vehicles to sort of sit side by side. Okay? Now, our, is the timing going to be implemented? I think our discussions with the county is that they've found our recommendations to be acceptable, and they are willing to work with us to implement the timing. The implementation of timing is a separate discussions that we've had with, with the county, different from the improvements, the physical improvements that, and then the signal update improvements that we have also discussed with the board and also with the county, which involves installing pedestrian signal heads, push buttons, and, and improvements on the crosswalk. But that's, those are two separate items.
Right. Right now, I'm just dealing with the automobile traffic, not pedestrian.
Right. Now, the last point, I guess, you made was, will the, will the improvements, the greater improvements to the intersection improve a left turn, I believe, signal, I guess is what you'd ask. It's not anything that we have brought to the county, nor the county has brought up with us. And primarily, the reason for that, from a traffic engineering standpoint, is that the level of service at the intersection after the re-timing is done, is actually at a very good level of service, even for urban conditions. And so, based on that analysis, the need for a, a physical left turn lane is not absolute, or not absolutely necessary. The, the intersection, the various approaches to the intersection, north, south, east, and west, will all function at a very good level of service.
My concern is, it, it's a horrible situation now. And I think it's liable to get worse, because the one factor that I can play into this situation is you're going to have two-hundred and some odd apartments there, with two-hundred, I'll call one car to a family, maybe there's more, with another two-hundred cars. And I don't know how many of those two-hundred cars are going to be moving in the morning at, at the prime rush hour times or between that. And if they, some of them start moving, the numbers that you've quoted, and the signal work that you're talking about, just doesn't work. And it's going to be a mess.
I think, I think the real issue is traveling eastbound on Third Street, which is where the backups usually tend to be. Valley Street, the cars do manage to maneuver around, and they, and they have to wait or something. But the Valley Street is not an issue that's going to go away, whether this building's there or not. That Valley Street issue stays there. But Third Street probably will get somewhat increased traffic, whether it's a ten percent increase or twenty percent, we don't know. But the, it's cars going east, especially at the evening rush hour, that get backed up, which causes the backup in front of the garage. And that's why you feel that the turn signal, because many of those cars want to make a left turn, and they're not able to, for whatever reason. And that's what the, you know, why the turn signal's become important, or delayed green, which I absolutely hate. But, but I assume that's what you mean by timing issues, is delayed greens. But even those would help deal with that issue, especially when there's a couple of cars waiting to make a left turn and nobody goes. And you wait two traffic light cycles, and then, of course, it clears up five minutes later.
Right. But I, I believe you're referring, however, to the eastbound direction, whereas Mr. Miller, I think, was referring to the northbound.
He's talking to north, south. Yeah, but I don't think we can do anything about it. And Valley Street has a very heavy traffic in the early morning in the rush hour. I'm not quite sure that this is going to change that problem. I don't think it's going to really change it.
Well, you can to some degree, if you put in a left turn signal line, where lefts can go through, you know, and the light changes. I mean, you have this in other locations.
Are you talking about the left turn on the, what would be the northbound Valley?
Yeah.
Okay.
I came to mind, because you can, I think you can make a right on red.
But the, all of the, all of the vehicles entering and exiting this site now will be on Third Street, as opposed to the, I mean, well, I'm sorry. All the vehicles entering this, and leaving the site after the development will be on Third Street. Currently, there is a entrance and exit to the site on Valley Street. And there are several, to the parking lot, the, the trans, the commuter lot, there is an exit, entrance and exit on Valley Street.
And you're not going to have that.
And there's also one, two, three other areas along Third Street where vehicles can come in and come out.
That's correct.
Now, they are all going to be basically concentrated to one location in that area. So I think if there's going to be a backup, most likely, the majority of the backup will be in the garage during heavy peaks of cars trying to exit the, the site as proposed.
Similar to what we have at the Soapak Lot.
I'm sorry?
Similar to what occurs at the Soapak Lot during the rush hour.
Right. You'll probably have more vehicles backed up in the parking area than you will on the site. Now, the tra, the traffic-
That makes it worse.
Well, it, not on, not so much on Valley Street, it makes it a little tougher on Third Street, I believe.
That's my point. Third Street would be the-
Third Street is-
It makes it worse on Valley, if you're turning off of Valley and you want to go into the parking lot, make a left in, and the stacking lane is all blocked up. It makes it worse. Well, anyway, those are my concerns.
This, I'm, I may regret this, asking this for the witness, but Mr. Miller's comment, I think you should address, which is, and I think your traffic study has, but his comment was that if you build your project, have you considered the impact in the traffic of all these cars coming out? And I believe you spent several months- And I believe you spent several months actually addressing that. Is there a way you can summarize that concisely for the board in the best way you can, which is that your study, or your traffic study, has taken into account the action, or the impact of the additional cars for people who live in that building, and what you found? Because even though he has his gut feeling, I believe he spent a long time trying to answer that question. So I'd like you, if you can, for the board again, just to summarize that.
Yes, sir. I guess in the first place, we, again, we did, we did the analysis, the trip generation, the trip distribution to the network in the manner that the industry, the profession recommends. And we also accounted for the number of vehicles, vehicle trips that would be generated by the site, both inbound and outbound. Now, in this case, considering that it is located in, you know, next to a train station, Mr. Miller's perception that there's 200 units, there's going to be 200 vehicles either coming in or going, is not necessarily, you know, accurate, in the sense that there is allowed a reduction in the number of trips. Because a lot of people who live in, in an area like this choose not to drive their cars because they do want to take advantage of the fact that it's in, it's next to a transit station, again, consistent with concepts of transit or into developments. The actual numbers that we're talking about, and specifically in a northbound direction that we're, that the site is adding, it's going to be about 20 vehicles an hour in the morning, it's about 28 vehicles an hour in the afternoon, and about 24 vehicles an hour additional in the Saturday peak. Now, we, the way we translate that is, in, in one minute, you're, you're talking about every two or three minutes that we've added a car making that left turn, northbound. Okay? And so, to, in, in, in adding those trips that the site has, is generated, and doing the analysis, again, our analysis shows that we still, we can deliver a good level of service in AM, PM, and Saturday peak if the county works with us to implement the signal re-timing. Now, in the insistence, if you will, of a northbound left turn is easily a double-edged sword. Now, it can, it does accommodate and makes it convenient for the northbound left turn to, to be made. But I can assure you, the rest of the approaches, the rest of the vehicles approaching the intersection will actually suffer an increase in delay. Because if we serve that northbound left turn with its own phase, its own green, yellow, and red, that takes away from the green, yellow, and red that we're allocating to the rest of the movements of the intersection. The key to an efficient and optimized traffic signal is to reduce the number of signal phases to the extent that you can hold it. If there's a really, if there's a great need for left turn phases or split phasing because there's, for accident reasons, or because the numbers show it that way, then that's where we're, if you will, forced to add the signal phases.
I have one question. I don't want to prolong this discussion too much more, because I would love to move on to something else. But one of the things that you just said, just stuck something in my mind, which was that looking at the vehicle per hour, I think, for our purposes, the average number of vehicles per hour is not quite as interesting as, you know, when the commuters are getting off the train, or they're not, 24 vehicles aren't leaving in an hour, they're not leaving every two or three minutes. 20 out of those 24 are leaving in, you know, a three or five-minute interval. And the rest of that hour, maybe there's one or two vehicles leaving. So the average for the hour might be 24 vehicles. But I think what, you know, some of the concerns that are being brought up tonight, that doesn't really address them, because that's not really how people are, that's not how people are driving. They're not driving on an average per hour basis, they're driving on, the train got in, everybody gets off the train, and everybody that's leaving that parking lot in that hour is leaving at the, in the same five minutes. So I think some of the queuing concerns that have been brought up, I would just say, I certainly, I don't, I don't necessarily agree that it's as big of a problem, but I also don't think that the average number of vehicles per hour in any way mitigates, you know, any of the concerns about the queuing that could accumulate when all people get off the train at the same time.
But this is, again, the, the number 24 I mentioned is incoming vehicles, making that northbound left turn in the morning.
But I guess, any, outside of the exact number of 24, just the, the way of measuring vehicles on a per hour basis, I think for our purposes, doesn't really help that much, because I think most of the concerns are about the commuter population, where 90% of the hourly vehicular travel is going to be within, you know, a five or 10-minute window. I think that's some of the concerns that are being brought up.
Well, I don't think 3 o'clock is a commuter hour.
No, not 3 o'clock.
But those are vehicles that are already at the site, leaving the site, because there's already a commuter lot there.
Well, I just, I think, I think.
There, it's, there's, there's not going to be a change in that regard. I mean, if there's still 20, 30 people getting off the train, you know, at that time, getting in their cars, that's what's happening now, in the existing commuter lot. I think the, it's the additional parking associated with the development, which is the concern. But practically speaking, the people that are living in the development are either commuting, or they're someplace else heading in when everybody else is heading out.
How do, how do you take that into account when, when looking, I mean, when looking at averages of vehicle, I'm certainly not a, you know, a traffic engineer, if that's not clear at this point. But I, I guess, when you're looking at different populations and how their, their driving habits, like what's being said, I mean, how do you take that into account when, when you're looking at things based on averages and numbers like that?
Right. Again, to the extent that it's a, a behavior like that is, is, is distinct, it's notable, then we do take that into account, is, we, we look for it, we double the, the volume, let's say, to account for, making sure that we, we take that into account in a one-hour analysis period. But the volumes that we're talking about coming in in the morning are largely, what we're talking about, are largely the commuter traffic. They're not trips, they're not, they're not a large number of trips that use the apartments. Most people who live in, and will be residents in the apartment, will be mostly leaving if they, if they have cars that they want to use. There's not very many of them who will be coming into the site in the morning.
So I think the point you're making is that while President Torpey has identified an incoming moment of intense traffic, you're saying it's not meant at the same time by the additional cars from the project? In other words, the project is not contributing to that bottleneck in any sense, is what you're suggesting.
But those are already there now.
They're largely over there, they're in there.
Well, the incoming commuters, we're just accommodating in the same way, whether or not you like the way they're accommodating. And the additional project cars are not adding to that particular issue of commuting in times.
That's correct.
Is there, I, I'm sorry, I'd like to interject, but is there, I mean, I'm, I don't mean to, you know, obviously, we can ask any questions we want, but I'm just sort of curious, is there a suggestion on the table as to what they could do differently? I mean, I, I mean, I, I reckon, is, is, is it an academic discussion just to talk about whether there's going to be an increase or not? Or is it a, a point where we're going to say, you should do something differently, or this is what you should do, or this is what we want in the approval, or?
Yeah.
Because I, I'd like to hear, I mean, I, if that's the case.
I think the only real solution is that the traffic light at Valley and Third, I'm just not sure, you know, if, if they're working with the county to, to push for either turn signals, timing changes, et cetera, et cetera, that those have to come. I mean, those, I, and I.
The procedures, that we're not going to decide that tonight, right? The procedure is just that you guys are going to agree to take those steps tonight. That's really what we need to be.
Yeah.
Okay. But, but, yeah, see, that's what I wanted to get to. First of all, let me correct one thing. I didn't say all 200 cars were leaving. I said, I have no idea of the 200 cars what's leaving. But let me, let me just address something. Counsel, before she turned it over to you, when I talked about assuming the county, the county goes along with the time, said, you're going to undertake that. I hear you saying otherwise.
You need to speak into the microphone.
Hi, Mario Iannelli. I was previously sworn in. I've met with the county and spoken with the county a number of times in the traffic consultants. And they've agreed that, when we did this traffic study, that the re-timing is necessary. And they agreed that it would mitigate the increase that's associated with this development. One of the things that, it's going to be part of the county approval, the planning, my understanding how the county planning board process is, is going to, to follow, it's going to follow that we submitted a traffic report, that traffic report is going to be part of the planning board approval. So these are part of our, I don't want to call them off-track improvements, but that's basically what it is. We're going to have to address the timing, because normally, when you impact a, a county intersection, they will look for you to mitigate that. They're not going to let, just simply let you impact their intersection and walk away and as a development. That's just not the way the county operates. Now, one of the things that we talked about was the try, and Miguel can elaborate, is that, you know, when we looked at the re-timing, we looked at increasing the green time on Third. That's what the re-timing accomplishes. Basically, you're, you're, when you re-time it, because the, the whole thing was, is that when we talked to the, the traffic superintendent, and basically, we asked him what we can incorporate into this traffic signal without re-hauling the entire traffic signal. And what he had mentioned was, it had enough built-in equipment within the existing infrastructure that we could put multiple phasings through the day and increase, and increase the green times in different directions, depending on the, you know, the loads that the, that the different traffic directions would, would surcharge on that intersection. So what you're looking at is that you're going to get a re-timing, and, and again, if I'm misspeaking, because again, I met with him, he's, Miguel and I worked on this together, is, one of the main goals of the re-timing is to increase the green on Third. So when people are trying to make a left, they're going to get an increased time to make that left, to kind of clear out some of that queuing. And I think I had mentioned early on that, even if this project wasn't going to happen, this is something that should probably happen anyway, because it's, it is needed out there. You know? And that's why when you look at the proposed built versus not, no-built scenarios in the future, you're almost seeing no impact associated with this development, because the re-timing is sorely needed. And that's why we propose it, and the county's going to require it. And, and we are going to put it as, right in front, we're saying this right now, that we are going to be responsible to implement the timing change. Now, we are going to push for it. If the county, if the county for some reason says, no, but stay home, because they're going to want their intersection, we're going to push for it. We don't, we're, we're making that commitment now, and we're going to fund it. So I don't see how the county will say no to that.
Question for you. If the intersection turns out to be a disaster, and the left, and the county comes in and said, we have to redo the signal to accommodate whether it's a left turn lane, or we've got to do the road, whatever, who winds up footing that bill?
The county.
Sal?
The county owns the intersection. And that's why they agreed it, they agreed that we can bond a certain portion to upgrade the pedestrian signals. We were willing to put the pedestrian signals on the existing infrastructure. The problem is it can't sustain, it can't support it. You would have to literally rebuild the entire intersection to, to add that.
And that was a $25,000.
That was 20, so, so basically, we're giving them 25, we're going to bond $25,000. So when they go and decide to upgrade that intersection, I have no control, no one here has control of when that's going to happen. But when that has to happen, they already have $25,000 set aside to go towards it.
Just as a process, like they're doing, they're doing a traffic signal on Scotland Road, and that forgot the intersection. And they, they don't go ahead, they come to the town and ask us to participate in the discussion for the approval. They don't actually ask us for any money for it, but they ask us for our input, and are okay, and have a hearing, so.
So, so you're comfortable, from a town's standpoint, that if the signal, if the intersection has to be upgraded, it's, it's a county obligation, you're not going to come back to South Orange and say, hey, you're going to have to kick in, because you created it by putting, allowing...
No, no, I mean, just, I mean, just, the problem, we've already made it clear, the problem's there already. This doesn't change the problem. This, the problem is there already. And I'll say that on the record, the problem is there already.
I know it is. That's why I know it.
What you guys are saying is that the county is basically said that they're okay with their intersection, that they're okay with just doing a signal timing change, that to them, that that will mitigate any of the problems that, that might exist.
At this time, with this development, with these analyses that we've provided them, they agree with our analysis that the signal change will mitigate basically the additional traffic associated with this development. Now, growth is growth. I mean, I can't control what's going to happen over time, but we are doing our fair share. And we're also putting, not only the timing, but we're also looking to, again, bond for that $25,000, which is, could be roughly 10% the cost of the intersection when they're time, when it come time to do it.
Okay. Let's move on. In addition, the applicant also has to get approval from the county planning board.
Yeah, I understand that. But they're going to base it, I mean, that we've approved the traffic study.
No, they'll have to, they will have to provide their own traffic study, and the county's traffic engineers will, will review that as well.
You want me to go on?
Yes.
Can I just ask one on this subject?
Sure.
Just, just a clarification. When you had spoken before about the turning movement, making a left onto Third, then to enter into the facility in the mornings, what type of queue were you anticipating for that left turn into the facility? Because you also spoke about cars couldn't get around that queue because the, because the street being narrow, and there's parking on the street. And you made a suggestion that we should remove some of the parking, is that...
I was mentioning all the, the last few points that you mentioned. I was referring to the northbound approach at the Third and Valley intersection.
Okay.
So this is the northbound approach on Valley, not, not the westbound approach to the site on Third.
And what type of queue were you anticipating at that, at that's location in the morning?
About two vehicles an hour.
No way.
That's all.
You expecting only two vehicles at that hour on northbound on Valley?
I think, I think.
No, he was asking the westbound left turn into the site.
Many of the cars come from the other direction, obviously. Most of them, most of them are coming from the other direction, so.
Just moving right along on the paving, since I'm the one that brought it up, as far as I'm con, I'm concerned, if you're going to cut the north side of the road, then you're obligated, now, I feel you should be obligated to finish that whole north side of the road. Because I, I've seen very few patches that have worked, they sink, and the town shouldn't be stuck with having to redo that at some point in time.
Actually, in our response, we indicate that only in one instance, right now, as utilities are planned, there's going to be, for the water line, because the water line's located on that side of the street, we're going to cross, and we're going to have a trench into the other side of Third. But we did agree, we did agree that, because if, that we would bond for the other side for the cost of milling overlay. You have to understand that it isn't just a milling overlay. Once you mill and overlay the other side of the site, you could be required to start doing handicap ramp upgrades. You can't just pave a road, you can't just mill and overlay a road and leave the existing handicap ramps the way they are. They have to be brought up to standard. And it can grow. And I don't think it's, the applicant is here, they're doing everything along their front of their street, and they are mitigating a very small trench, which can be done properly compacted, I'm not concerned with that. And they're willing to bond for the milling and overlay of the other side of Third. Only. If it exceeds a certain amount.
Yeah, but you're, you're, you're putting an exceed on it. And I don't, I don't agree with your exceed. I mean, I have no idea how many patches you're going to put on, I have no idea what your truck traffic is going to do to, to Third, because I don't know how your trucks are totally going to enter into the site.
There is a village ordinance regarding road opening and road opening permits. There's a certain requirement, and depending on the size of the opening, would determine how, how much the applicant would have to resurface, or what they can do to patch. I think what you're talking about, though, and what the applicant is talking about, is really a discussion between the applicant and the board of trustees, because the trustees are the ones that are going to have to make the agreement in the end for any improvements that have to be done along the street. So if, if the applicant is willing to bond the, the money that's required to pave the other side of the street, and the trustees are in agreement with that, then I think, you know, the, the village and the applicant can work out an agreement to do any necessary improvements on the other side of the street, like the applicant's talking about, maybe an improvement to the handicap ramp at the corner of Sloane Street. You know, that ramp may need to be there.
I just get concerned, Sal, as you well know, I mean, in the development that I live in, the developer contributed to redo the road. And the road, I think, got torn up a lot more. And what the developer agreed to contribute and pay wasn't enough to do the road, so the road just sits the way it is.
Well, they're, they're only going to contribute the patching amount.
And they're only bonding the patching amount, not the resurfacing. You're going to rebond the resurfacing completely?
Well, we indicate that if there is a certain amount of damage to the road, that we would bond for the, to cover the resurfacing of that side.
But you don't mean just cuts?
Correct.
Are you dealing with just cuts or damage?
We're talking about the number of patches required. That's how we're trying to quantify the extent. That's how we're trying to quantify the extent.
When we have an ordinance, and they say if they damage it, wouldn't our ordinance kick in?
Obviously, we're going to comply with an ordinance. We were trying to come up with something else to give you, there's a, there is.
Look, if Sal tells me he's going to enforce it, Sal, do my guess.
Well, there's a, there is an ordinance requiring a, a street or road opening permit from anybody who wants to open up a village road. And depending on the size of the opening and the, the, the work involved, will determine how much of the road needs to be repaired. If the applicant is, is willing to, you know, bond the money to resurface the other side of the road, or resurface the other side of the road as part of the requirement, then they'll have to do that.
Were they stated over five patches, or five patches, or over whatever?
It's based on square footage, actually, of the opening.
And where are you, just go through your staging of your construction vehicles. You said you're going to stage them all on-site. And I just don't see how you're going to stage all your construction vehicles on-site.
That is what we intend to do, stage on-site. I'm not sure we've, we're at the point of giving you more detail than that at this point.
Okay. And then my last question really had to do with parking required for, uh, the work, workspaces and your 3,000, and your 3,000 square foot, um, I'll call it restaurant, for lack of a better word, coffee shop, whatever it is. Uh, is, what, I, I don't know what our ordinance says, Susan, about work units and I, because I have no idea what uses are going to be in there. I can think of some horrendous uses that draw traffic in. Uh, is that taken into consideration of the parking that they figured in? I'm going to, I mean, I don't know how many spaces are needed for work units. I don't know how many seats are proposed in 3,000 square feet of cafeteria.
I can tell that the work area portion of those spaces cannot exceed 700 square feet. So it's a relatively small area. Um, and I do know that also there's a separate calculation for, um, retail and restaurant in the redevelopment plan, which I take is a reflection of the fact that this is a different type. This isn't a strip mall in terms of how the parking's calculated, where I think it's one space per three or four seats for a restaurant, and one space for 500 square feet of retail, which is obviously a different calculation than your regular ordinance.
Yeah, I'm just concerned with your uses for the 29 spaces that are going to be not kind of monthly parkers or whatever. Because I think the 29 spaces are allocated for people that are visiting the work units, people, people that are visiting the coffee shop or anything else there.
Well, I think part of the.
And guests.
We feel that the design is adequate and that we can meet the standards. I think what's important also is, because some of this has to be speculative in terms of who's going to be in the retail space and who's going to be in the work-lives spaces, we can't give you the, you know, exact. But we do know that part of the design of the center, of the project where it's located, is adjacent to the train station, um, accessible for pedestrians. And so, I think it makes sense that we're not designing it for a suburban strip center. But our view is that there is adequate parking to meet those standards that were designed to recognize the type of project being developed. I don't know that we can give you more specifics, because we can't, we haven't rented it yet.
I understand that.
I, I, yeah, I, I hear the concern. Until you know what's there, you don't know. I'm actually really, I'm always concerned with any of these projects where guests come to park. So someone who lives there invites people, there's, these buildings don't allow for guest parking at all. They discount on street parking or.
But I don't think that's the circumstance here. To the extent that what you do have here and you don't have in most projects is you have the commuter parking. So on a Saturday night, when someone's having people, you have this whole parking lot that you don't have in a condo.
I, I, you know, I get that. But on a Friday, on a Friday evening, it runs into a problem, because commuters don't get home to.
And then my last question, just for Sal, the Environmental Commission, have any comments?
It is what it is.
Not them, I don't know, was it referred to the Environmental Commission?
Excuse me?
Was the application referred to the Environmental Commission? I don't know.
I would hope so.
I don't know that they had any comments.
Isn't that norm that it's supposed to go to the Environmental Commission?
We don't have a liaison there right now, so we're a bit of a disaster.
You're, you're, you're the, uh.
No, 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 no. Plates full.
Mr. Dwyer, can we just mark this, the letter? I don't know, is the letter automatically part of the record? Or do we need to mark it as an exhibit?
Normally, I haven't marked review letters, but I think we started to in this case. All right, what do we have to, Jeff? Well?
I just want to make sure. Oh, um, what we, one, just one last item. Um, because we gave you the compliance chart for the signage, we do have an amended one, because we obviously reduced the size of the parking sign, so we just wanted you to have that. We have enough in the board, just so then, what remains in the record has this.
We can hear, we can hear you, but he can't.
I know. Everybody can hear me. Um, what, um, we just want to make sure that what's in the record is the smaller sign, because we did reduce it, rather than having an exhibit that appears to indicate that we're seeking the, um, 40 square feet as opposed to the 20. So, if that was A. Did I say it backwards? We had originally asked for 40, and that's what the original chart said. Now we're asking for 20 on the two-phase sign, and now we wanted to reflect that smaller number. So I guess that would be A 13, if I can.
What is, was it Mark Dwyer, was it Mark, that number A?
Oh, okay, amended. I, I don't, do we have the signed compliance charter? We may have called it.
I think that was D 11.
Okay, so this is A 11, A for amended?
Okay.
So counsel, I would, I think your architect is here, that we could talk to him about a few items?
Absolutely.
Can we bring him up? Ah, no.
Is that a paper?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm going to sell it back to you.
I think we're beginning to trust you guys, which could be an issue, I don't know.
Yes, our architect is here.
So.
Oh.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Brian Lee with Twitty Allison Partners, 1300 Spring Street, Silver Spring, Maryland.
Good, thank you for coming up. Um, so, I know that you spent some time and energy on this last document explaining your basic strategy for the sustainable approach. And, um, I think, and, and the developer's reputation definitely precedes this, and so we're, we're encouraged by that. But there were a couple, on behalf of some of the members that couldn't make it tonight, I just wanted to raise another issue with you, and so let you address it. In, in terms of our, our redevelopment plan, we do talk about stormwater management and green stormwater management, and I was, um, wondering again, uh, that, uh, in, in the category of energy optimization, which is, I think, 35 credits worth of lead credits, uh, and I think you guys are hitting about one of those. Just if you would talk to the board again about, briefly, about what you're trying to do in terms of your lead approach, and what you feel you can efficiently or, or effectively leave out in terms of those particular credits under that particular category. Not to make it too complicated, just to give the board a comfort that you're doing everything. Because some of our board members still feels that there are, uh, strategies that are not being addressed that could be addressed in a development like yours.
I'd be glad to.
Briefly?
So, the, the overall strategy is to, is to, is to work inherently from the site and do the, and maximize the amount of passive strategies that we work with on top of what the site provides us with. And then as we move, so, so there are kinds of, so we look for sites that provide walkability that are transit-oriented, and those get you a lot of lead points, most of you who are familiar with lead would know. Uh, and then beyond that, we look at the passive strategies. So we look at solar orientation and material sourcing, and, um, how shading is utilized, and, uh, the, the things that are easily done and that have long-lasting impacts. Um, and then when we're looking to managing energy with the building, we look for the things that will have the long-term impact for the project. So for example, we are, we are spending our money on the walls and the envelope of the building, which is much harder to change over time, whereas frankly, mechanical units do get swapped out every 10, 20, 30 years or so. So the strategy we've used in terms of designing the building has kept that in mind as we've moved forward in the, in the project design. We feel that by providing a quality durable envelope that incorporates tight construction, uh, high-efficiency windows and high-efficiency wall and roof insulation, we will provide the best sustainable solution for the long term.
It is, just, uh, a green roof. Is that, was that ever considered for all the extensive flat roofs that we have there? Any kind of green roof, or, um, do you feel that that's a worthwhile objective? Or you feel, like, would like your opinion on why that wasn't considered?
We, we are considering for some, yeah, we have three small portions, um, where the benefit of the green roof can be utilized by the residents who would look upon, look down upon those flat portions of the roof. Where, um, where there are no residents or any citizen of South Orange looking down upon the roof of the building, we're using what's called a cool roof, which has a high albedo and allows the light to reflect off and helps mitigate heat island effects.
But less, less water absorption? I mean, there's not as much storm water.
It has no impact on warrants, it's purely about heat absorption.
I understand. But no, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Since the person who raised this point the most strongly is not here, I just want to, if I remember correctly, I, I won't do his argument justice, I'm sure, but I think what his comment was, was that most of the points in the checklist that was provided, seemed to be points that were inherent to the site location, rather than, uh, things that the developer was choosing to do of, you know, on its own volition. And I'm really, has, has there been some change in the approach that was articulated in the document that we received, the Lead for Homes Mid-Ride Project Check, which was prepared by Jared Lyons with Jonathan Rose Companies? I mean, is there any, anything different since that, since that time? I mean, I'm just, I'm just sort of curious, I mean.
Well, even though, I, for one, even though I raised our missing members' concerns, I thought their response in this summary, this two-page summary and the little pyramid chart, I think, made a fairly convincing case that what they're doing in terms of their lead approach and their sustainable strategy is the sort of, uh, bread and butter kind of things, and that, uh, I mean, I felt in terms of your envelope and your types of fixtures that you're using, those are basic things, and they may not have all the wow, but it seems that they're, uh, doing a very sustainable project. They're reaching a very sustainable goal, and they may not be allotting certain things that he's looking for. Anyway, that was my opinion, but I appreciate you raising that. We felt we needed to raise this as a concern.
Right, and again. Do you, do you, I, I'm sorry, if I may just, are you expecting as a result of the things that you've articulated in the memo, that you will? You know, I, I understand you're agreeing with the municipalities to achieve a silver level. So my question is, having, having achieved your minimum silver level, is this, are you, are, are these new strategies by which you expect you're going to achieve a higher-than-silver level, like gold or maybe even platinum? Or are you just saying that, you know what, silver is where we're getting? These things are things maybe we'll do, maybe we won't do. We're going to get that silver, and that's where we're, that's really the boost there.
We are promising silver. We hope to achieve higher, um, the energy, you know, we're early in the design process because of this entitlement phase, and as we move forward the process, we, we probably will get more refinement and be able to find more points in the energy model. But in, in this early stage of the design process, we cannot promise that in a document that we would get blessed before boards such as yours. So, we, we hope to find more points in energy, I just can't promise it at this point.
I'm sure when the process is all over, you'll want to take credit for the level of lead certification that you achieved, so.
We'll all be looking for, we'll all be looking forward to that, your boy. Susan.
I just had a clarification on your, to the, the document. And on the top of the second, um, page in the first paragraph, um, I, and it was, I just want to clarify this, because a lot of what you had as examples generally are done in what I would consider to be sustainable projects. Um, and I, I don't think you're not doing them, I'm just asking clarification. Where it says, "Tankless gas-water heaters, low-flow plumbing fixtures, energy-efficient lighting, um, uh, the effective control measures, ventilation and such." Are those, can you just clarify, are those, are those action items that you traditionally have in your projects? And you would be attempting to incorporate, incorporate those in? Such as energy-efficient appliances even? Um, are those things that you anticipate likely doing?
Um, to, just to answer that question, we generally have energy-efficient appliances in our product. What we typically don't have in our projects, that Jonathan Rose does actually typically have, are the tankless water heaters, heaters at a, at a significant upcharge to the project. Those are, those are costly items that we, that this project will have that most sustainable projects do not. So that's one example of an item in this building that will take it to a higher level in those projects that we're doing that are sustainable.
Oh, you're, you are doing those?
Yes, we are doing that.
Okay, because that's not what.
We are anticipating to do tankless water heaters.
Oh, okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. That's, you're anticipating, but you're not committing.
I am anticipating, but I am not committing.
Is that accurate? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Board, any other questions for this witness, or any other witnesses? Any questions from our essays? Uh, at this point, is there anybody in the public out there that would like to? Susan, what?
There's one, there's one comment that was made, if I may.
Yes.
Um, and it was in your previous, one of your previous responses, and I just want to clarify something else. Um, one of our comments in our initial memo related to the windows and the, and the color of the windows. And we had requested that the windows be dark rather than white.
Are you talking about the frames and the mullions?
The frames, correct. And I want to clarify that that will be done.
I, I actually, um.
What?
One of our favorite buildings in South Orange happens to be the, uh, South Orange Village Fire Station. Our building has a similar variety of materials and colors and finishes to the South Orange Village Fire Station. The colors of our windows emulate the colors on the South Orange Village Fire Station, include the cat and colors. But that isn't to say that we aren't willing to, to study, if the board would allow, to look at other colors for the ground floor window finishes. But for the base window colors in the building, uh, these colors, while emulating probably one of your best buildings in town, also allow us the greatest flexibility to achieve these sustainable goals and the soundproofing goals that we're going to need, the challenges that, um, our windows will face. By using this color palette for the windows, we get the broadest representation of available products to meet the goals. And, uh, and so we, uh, we think there's, there, there's more to the overall material palette. They don't, they don't, they don't scream, uh, we have multiple brick colors and.
Can you just point those colors out for the board while you're there? I'll take them.
There are two facade identities around the perimeter of the, of the building. There's the, what I'll call the, uh, the red, um, building on Valley, and then there's a liner building for the parking garage. There's two separate building identities for each of these, so that there's a, a deeper red with a, a black iron spot accent brick for the building along Valley. And then for the liner building, there's a more orangey hue brick with a warmer iron spot. The iron spots are shiny, they'll read darker in shade, but when the sun hits them, they'll flash to shinier. So you get a little bit of articulation, a little bit of sparkle in the, in the masonry finishes. On top of that, above that, on the top floor of the building, for the Valley Street Building, there'll be a blue hue to the hardy. there'll be a blue hue to the hardy, and on the liner building at the intersection of Sloan, and third, there'll be a more green hue to the building. To bring this building together, in one, we're using a window color that's more muted and again allows us the flexibility and to achieve the technical requirements that are demanded of us with the windows.
And just to conclude, those color samples are where on the board?
The window color samples are here and here, but I think to the staff planner's point, I do, I think it would be good to be able to explore other colors for the ground floor if allowed for by the board within a dark range, because I can see that being useful at the retail level.
She wants them lighter, but I'm not, you want them darker rather than white?
No, I would like, I would strongly recommend that all the windows be darker rather than the off-white or white.
Well, I don't see any off-white there.
These are not off-white colors, Susan.
And as he said, that does, I mean, I'm inclined just aesthetically that I think they have it kind of right, but that's one man's opinion versus your opinion, and so we'll take that into consideration. How-
They will not be white, though, according to the way that some of the elevations are. It appears as though it's not-
You have no white intended for these windows, right?
Most, there's all, all manufacturers have at least a white and a beige-y color in their range, and we would use the beige.
Okay.
And again, that is reflective of the color.
Susan, is there a reason that you-
Why do you strongly recommend dark?
Yes, I think it provides a richness to the facade of the building that you will not get in the white or the light beige.
We have no problem exploring this, as if you allow us the flexibility to choose a dark color, and we can utilize it, we'd be happy to put it in the building, providing that it doesn't tamper our window glass.
Sounds good. All right.
I have just one quick question on my confirmation earlier, just about the generator. It says in here that it's going to be sufficient to provide power for corridors, stairwells, and elevators. Does that include power to like emergency lighting in the garage itself? And also, would that include lighting, would that include power for lighting in the garage? Just because those three things, you know, it doesn't say, you know, including, it just says those three things. Saying for power to the garage, saying for power to the garage for lighting, for the gate, so the gate can go up and down, and also for security cameras that are discussed in the memo?
That's correct.
For all of those things?
So, yeah, parking equipment, lighting, elevators.
Okay. Thank you.
Good, thanks. Okay, I think that concludes our questions of these witnesses and all the testimonies. So, at this point, if there's anyone in our public who would like to either ask a question or just make an opinion, please feel, come up to the microphone, tell us who you are and-
We have three question witnesses.
Is this, are there any questions? Let's close the witnesses down. Are there any questions that you have for the witnesses as opposed to an opinion you're going to voice?
These are questions.
These are questions, so please.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Lisa Anderson, I'm a long time resident of South Orange. I have three questions.
Okay.
And I like answers. First one is, you're in a two-mile radius of school. Don't school out and board after school. Crossing guard has to cross the children before and after on Valley and Third. Have you taken that into consideration? The next one-
Let's answer each one in turn, okay? So, your question is, is there going to be a crossing guard?
Well, there will be crossing guard at the traffic in the morning and afternoon.
The police chief determines where crossing guards are needed based on the routes that the children go to, so if in that particular, in a particular given school year, there's enough children to justify a crossing guard, then the crossing guard is put there.
So, trustee Rousen says that's going to be our determination, Village.
Okay. Next one, it is, well, as this county, the school is before the Valley and Third, it's completed.
To what? Which?
To the white.
To the light?
To the light, yes. For white.
I think what we heard is that they are working with the county now to improve the signalization there and that it will be basically the same time as the project is developed.
It's a race.
So, the answer is, we don't know whether it's before, after, or during.
And that one's with the sewer system. How can the sewer system handle the Valley and Third light?
Mr. Nellie, do you want to address that?
Is it stormwater you're asking about?
Stormwater.
Yes, don't worry, yes. Well, the sanitary source system, not only in the adjacent pipe network, but also at the treatment plant, there's a process we go through to verify the capacity at all levels. It's a TWA process that we basically, once this, if this board decides to act positively tonight, we would then approach the town, the town would endorse it, confirming the capacity with, and then it would go to the MUA and then ultimately the treatment plant. So, the ability, and from what our understanding is, we don't know of any problems from the sanitary source side, either in the conveyance or the treatment. So, the infrastructure in the treatment plant should be able to handle this proposed project, but that will be confirmed during this application process.
Thank you. Any other questions for any of the witnesses from the public? Okay, at this time, the testimony is going to be closed and we will take any opinions from the public on this application.
Janine Bauer, 416 Clark Street. I would just like to thank both the Village and Jonathan Rose Company for setting aside the fifteen-foot right-of-way along the railroad and point out that a lot of the moor trips are made by walking and bicycling to the station, particularly from some of the areas that Mr. Miller and others discussed, for instance, northbound on Valley and then turning and so forth, to the extent we can replace them, it's all for the good. Even though I was very impressed, even when I read the initial version of the traffic study, that the, for the most part, the level of service was not deteriorated, partly you've explained that tonight because there was some extra time and so on and so forth, and to the extent that we can work in pedestrian phases without turning, in other words, more protected pedestrian phase, as well as the fifteen-foot right-of-way, that would be great. But I just want to say, I think it's a great project and for whatever small part I have, thank you very much for the accommodation and thank you, Board, for asking such excellent questions.
Thank you. All right, Board. So, I don't think they're going to come back again, so I think we have to resolve this. What?
I will just be happy to offer a motion as soon as any, I mean, aside from giving them discretion about the window colors, I'm not really sure what other specific items we would want to incorporate from the various days of testimony and questions, so if somebody would refresh my memory, I would be happy to offer those as a part of the resolution.
I could try. There was, when we started to reach the July hearing, I went through my notes and tried to come up with what I thought were the conditions the board had sought to impose, and what I found was there were a lot of open items. So, that turned into a memo which was sent to the applicant and they responded, and we've gotten those responses. So, most of those questions that I had were answered. There's also been a subsequent memo from them dated July 31st, answering the board's questions, and we've all seen those and we discussed those tonight as well. I've gotten one set of conditions, proposed conditions from Amlin that was prepared about three weeks ago, so some of these items may be answered, but certainly those we ought to take a look at. I can read those to you now if you'd like to hear them. They're asking that they address their review letters dated May 30th and July 10th. I should state at this point, the applicant has also proposed a set of conditions to the, if the board approves the application, and what they've done is attempt to go through all the various review letters that have come from the board planner and the board engineer, identify those items which were answered and are handled already, and identify those items which are still open. That has been sent just recently to Amlin and to Iron Rules to get them to see if they can agree with what the applicant says is open as opposed to what's already been taken out the table. We don't have the answers yet for the few items that appear to have been left open, but unless, I don't know if you're ready to do that, Chuck, tonight or not.
There are several minor items that you want me to touch on these, or we just, they're very minor in nature.
Are you going to refer back to the original letters? Which ones are open or do you just have a-
No, no, just on the last memo. It was just on the last memo. And that's going to be on the July 10th memo. Regarding drawing number L-100, we had a question on number, item three in our memo, detail of the eight-by-eight granite cobble unit paving between the curb and sidewalk should be provided. The next comment was number five, also on drawing number L-100, area along the western portion of the south facade, along the west side of the building, it's not shown with any treatment. This is just a-
You're going to go to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is to do with the wall along the south facade. There's some, a blank wall near the utility area. Drawing number L-120, there were some, we were referring to a screen wall at the transformers. We were going to defer to the board about buffering this item. It's just a small area.
What number was that?
This was drawing L-120, item number seven.
Seven?
They proposed two green ginkgos. Mr. Keller thought that maybe we should have some evergreen tree shrubs to be a more effective screen in that area.
What item was that?
That was number seven, same old part number seven. And that would be it. Those are our comments. Those are the only items we had, very minor.
Starting from the last one, wasn't that we had a discussion about-
On ginkgo, right, with male, right, we didn't want the female ginkgo.
Right, but we said the female, and I thought the board was okay with that.
It wasn't a question about the ginkgo, but it was additional, because those would be higher canopy. It was about the wall, it would be exposed underneath, and should evergreens be lower evergreens try and break up the massing of the wall?
So, this is in addition to the ginkgos?
In addition to the ginkgos, correct. Well, like I said, just minor issues.
We talked about the ginkgos. So, I'm sorry, what were the responses then? It's a, an item number three?
Right. Actually, I thought maybe we weren't, where it said that things would be shown on plans, I guess we may not have dealt with them explicitly. The under drawing L-100, Chuck, what was the first one, three?
Number three.
Detail of the eight-by-eight granite cobble unit paving between the curb and sidewalk should be provided. I thought the answer was yes, we'll provide it when we do compliance. Did we already provide it on the plan?
Yeah, but.
If it wasn't yet, I mean, again, where it asks for something to be shown on the plan, we just assume that that would be part of compliance, that we would have that detail.
And we had a couple additional, if you just, me with the engineer, resolve it, or talk to him.
Okay.
Just a minor issue on the detail page, just to work it out.
So, three and five then are both things to be identified, they have or will be identified and therefore not necessary to be mentioned as a condition of approval, but item number seven remains open because it's a suggestion of the evergreen trees being in addition to the ginkgos. Am I correct?
That's correct.
And I think our response, and I think it may have been in some testimony, it may have been, Narik was here, but I think our view was that the wall we're putting up is not utilitarian, but is part of the streetscape, and we really didn't want to hide it. So, that was the, I think that was our explanation before and that would remain, what?
Susan?
If we can get him back from Connecticut tonight.
Yeah.
I think Pat has some things to ask.
Well, can we just finish that subject first?
They'll reach some accommodation. Obviously, that's not death-defying.
So, you will work it out?
Right. We think our wall is nice-looking, but.
Isn't it architectural?
I think we want some evergreen, some softening of that wall as well.
Okay. Patrick?
Okay. Setting aside for a minute the proposed conditions that had to do with review letters, which I'm going to allow the people who wrote the review letters to tell us whether or not they've been satisfied. Obviously, if they haven't been satisfied, the applicant was agreeing to-
See, that's the, what we try to do is go through the review letter and rather than have the situation where later someone says, well, you're going to satisfy the items in these six letters, and we say, well, we didn't agree to all of those, or we put stuff on the plan to show, we try to go through and identify the things that were still open, which were generally plan revisions. So, I don't know how to answer that, because many of the items on there, we've had discussion about, and the position is not exactly what we started with and not exactly what they had in their letter. So, that's why, you know, we may have to go through all the items, but I hesitate to say, yes, we're going to comply with all of those, because we've had evenings of discussion about that.
Patrick, it's our responsibility at this point to see, I mean, to sift through this and decide whether or not, I mean, you can't just leave it open-ended, you know, we'll go through the whole, you know, we'll all, they'll agree to go through it all again. Can't do that. So, that's why I said we should identify. I mean, I think they've been pretty accommodating in responding to our issues. If we have an issue where there's something we want changed based on what they've said, that's our prerogative, but I don't think it's quite fair to leave it open-ended like that.
Board, there's anybody, any of the review letters, anything stick out that you want to raise?
The other issue, which I didn't, we do, we do need to clarify, I think there also needs to be a stipulation about signage, the parking signage, which has to be twenty feet.
There are some other items which are not specific to the review letters, which I think-
Go ahead.
-are going to be included. I think some of these have already been covered in the July 31st letter. They had to do with the street lighting fixtures along Third Street, what they would be, they're going to be a certain type of fixture, it's been agreed upon. It's similar to the light fixtures that are used in South Orange. Can you just, just so, I'm going to be, when I fashion all this, Dan, tell me where I'm, tell me where I'm looking here in the letter that I might-
You don't have it in the letter.
You don't have it.
He's re-
I'm looking at proposed conditions I've received from the applicant. Okay, so it's not inside the garage, it's outside the garage? These are the street lighting on Third.
Okay.
On Third. That no access, will we be permitted to the easement area along the railroad unless that area is improved by the Village after dedication by the applicant?
I think there was a concern with people having access to that if it's not in an improved condition, and we will take what, you know, some step to preclude that so that there aren't people wandering down that, if it's not approved, improved, to accommodate pedestrians.
Okay. Following construction, the southern half of Third Street from Valley Sloan, from the center line to the applicant side of the street will be repaved, the northern side would only be repaved if there were more, five or more cuts, in which case they would agree to five or more patches is the way they said, in which case they bond them out to recover the resurfacing of the northern half. That was their proposal.
Yeah, and I would accept it.
Does-
I think we left that we're set.
That doesn't supersede the Village's ordinance regarding road open and road open.
Yeah, whatever, if the Village ordinance requires more, they have to do that.
We'll indicate that. Or whichever is greater.
Okay. The next one was the question about installing additional lighting under the railroad trestle. They've agreed that that would be something they're going to look into. Again, that's not yet been decided. I don't believe you got an answer.
Have we spoken to them? We pursue. Okay. What we indicated is that we're willing to talk to them to see if they're willing to install more lights. We'll pursue asking, but it's not for us to be doing improvements on their infrastructure.
The next was, it will be a silver lead project at a minimum. Correct.
Isn't that already in the redevelopment agreement?
Actually, the redevelopment agreement, I don't know what the plan says, I just looked at the agreement. All it says is that it will be lead certified. It does not even say silver. The plan may, but the agreement doesn't, it just doesn't.
Isn't just the silver the minimum?
The next item was, work live units will not be used as medical office space, but may be used for other professional office space, arts and media production studio space- may be used for other professional office space, arts and media production studio space, gallery space, arts and craft production, accessory retail directly related to enumerated uses, which, are these the uses set forth in the redevelopment plan?
No. Those were not identified, but, but I, I thought I recall comment, testimony that number one, it would only be on the first floor.
Yes.
But those six that were identified, so probably that should be...
But I don't think we've, anybody's agreed on gallery, you know, God knows how many spaces you need for a gallery.
No, no, remember, each one is limited to seven, what was the, seven? The uni, the work area, the work portion is 400 square feet max in the largest unit. So that's what we were trying to say, that even though, that's still the limit in terms of the size of it, so...
So are you attempting to limit the uses that the developer wants to use, or allow those to be used for by enumerating these?
I think these were by way of example. I think what was raised is a concern about medical, and we've agreed that that won't be one of them. I don't know that there's any specific definition, and I think this was to give some indication of the scope, and the retail that's related is simply not a separate retail use, but if you had a gallery that they could sell a piece of art, and that wouldn't violate the work.
Could you handle my answer then, just using the language incidental?
Are the uses listed in the redevelopment plan, or what the permitted, they're not?
No. Well, if you, if you rely, the principal permitted uses, there are a number of principal permitted uses. So if you want to utilize those...
What are they?
Okay. They are, other than live work units and multifamily, childcare centers, banks and commercial savings, public uses, restaurants, retail sales, retail services, taverns, cafes, retail markets, private recreational facilities...
No, no, you're thinking doctors, architects.
Parking garages, and essential services.
Those are the, those are the uses on site, and those are what could go, some of those into the retail space. But I think that's why we were going to, trying to give some scope to what would be appropriate in a live work, it's a crap.
I'm sorry, the retail space you said is 3,000 square feet, and it's going to be one user. You testified, yes you did. You said it's going to be kind of like a cafe.
We anticipated one user, we said, actually, when we spoke about the signs, we said there could be up to three uses in there. What we said is what we anticipate is most likely that it would be a single user, something like a cafe, but if that's not who rents it, there's no reason that it couldn't be two 1,500 square foot users.
The issue I have with that statement is then, it affects parking as your use that you put in. And you can only use those 29 spaces so many times, and the street spaces so many times. Can't keep counting.
So I'm up to nine.
Yeah, but... We are back on...
I mean, I can't recall the substance of the nine, but I'm up to nine.
We're back on whether or not the, the board wants to agree to limit the types of uses that are going to be a live work spaces to these proposed uses, which are professional office, art and media production, studio space, art and craft production, and accessory retail directly related to these uses.
I think my, my concern last time was the art and craft production, because I don't know what production meant, because if you have people in there who are making jewelry and stuff, and using glue guns, or hammers and stuff like that, it'd get noisy. And we, I bring it up because we have somebody in town who does something similar, and we get complaints about it, so it's, it's, production is the word that we're taking out of there. It'd be one thing if they're, I just don't know how you, I'd probably take that whole definition out, the art and production.
Isn't, isn't a live work unit more geared to like an accountant?
Yeah, accountants, or architects, professionals, therapists.
Something that's not going to have tremendous traffic in it. You know, I don't think a live work unit is retail, I don't think it's any of those kind of uses.
But I do think live work is somewhere where an artist would live, who produces a sculptor, or a painter. That's also a live, a typical live work, and I don't know that that would, that's why we said the gallery is sort of in keeping.
Yeah, but gallery implies people visiting, lots of people visiting. You know, that's what gallery implies.
I think, yeah, I mean, artist workspace would be fine, but I think you don't want to have it, you don't want to have it turned into a retail spot. So it has to, has to be very clear that it's not for retail.
Does the developer, the...
I tend to think that someone, I tend to think no one's going to rent that space 400 square feet for retail, but I think we just have to be careful that we don't go down that path.
Then, again, I think we, what we called accessory retail may have been incidental, where someone sells a product, but you can certainly take out the reference to the retail. That's not what the focus of that is.
If someone sells a piece of artwork, that's fine.
That was our point.
I don't want to make it retail with advertising a gallery.
How about if somebody has Tupperware party?
You're putting, I don't want to put your wife out of business, so it's...
Yeah, right, I wish you would.
That's on the fourth floor.
Retail would be a permitted use on the first floor, though.
Excuse me?
Retail would be a permitted use.
Not in the 400, well...
Not in the live work units.
Depending on, I mean, they could have...
We don't have to permit it in this.
We better go there.
Well, there is, there's...
A dwelling unit, it's a definition, live work. A dwelling unit in which a significant portion of the space includes a permitted non-residential use that is operated by the tenant.
Significant portion of the space.
That is operated by the tenant. So it can't be used out to somebody that doesn't live there.
No, no, I understand that, but if a significant, just read that again.
A dwelling unit in which a significant portion of the space includes a permitted non-residential use that is operated by the tenant.
That's a significant portion of the space.
Right.
So a person could have a cot in there, a sink, and a stove.
But what they have put forth is that it will be no more than 400 square feet?
Brian? Brian, no more than 400 square feet for the work? The units are up to 800, but is that how we just...
Well, then you definitely have a problem.
No more than 400.
You have limited them.
No more than 400 square feet.
And then retail would be a permitted use.
That's correct.
Because it's a permitted use in the area.
The way that it's structured.
We're making non-food development.
But I believe, I believe professional offices would not be permitted on the ground floor, based on...
The way that this is written, that's correct.
Well, would that be permitted?
Offices.
It would not be offices, the way that it's structured right now. And this was structured the way that, this is structured back with the assistance of...
It says, I'm sorry, didn't you just say non-residential?
Permitted, non-residence.
Permitted, non-residential.
This is based on our redevelopment plan?
That does not mean... Patrick? That that can't be a condition of approval, correct?
If it violates our, the ordinance, I don't know.
The uses you read, all of the permitted uses.
It's an accessory use.
Are we changing, are you saying we do not have professional offices?
That's correct.
They're just not permitted on the ground floor?
They're not...
First floor, professional offices, or are they not permitted at all?
No, they're not permitted.
In this zone at all?
That's correct.
You read the permitted uses in the plan.
Correct.
What were the, office is not, home occupation is not permitted?
That's correct. Live work, live work is.
Say it again.
Live work is, right?
I'm not, I'm missing something here, live work. So if someone's an architect and they work... These are strictly live work, so if you're not living there, you can't use it.
That's correct.
I mean, so these are strictly live work, so, okay, what is the, if it's a live work, what are, what are the uses allowed?
If it is a live work, and there is a definition, you can look back. It says permitted, non-residential use.
So you go back to the uses that are listed as permitted in the zone. Those uses can be used as a portion of the live workspace.
Where is the list of permitted residential uses?
That's what I read before.
And so within that zone, it's only retail, basically?
That's what I read before, which is multifamily, live work units, childcare centers, banks, both commercial and savings, public uses, restaurants, retail sales, retail services, taverns, cafes, retail markets, private recreation facilities, parking garages, and essential services.
So childcare is permitted?
What's the definition of the village workspace?
Childcare is permitted.
That's what she gave earlier. She read it as... Any permitted non-residential use. Then she just told you what the non-residential uses were.
She just read them to you.
Non-residential permitted use.
Goes around in a circle.
But let's say childcare for a moment, aren't there specific requirements for childcare?
That's not the right...
Well, there's state requirements.
Permitting in any retail zone, in any residential.
That's, this is a separate freestanding zone.
Does that supersede, whereas it's an any residential?
It supersedes.
Well, I think the town council, the board trustees, may want to reconsider that.
Well, I don't know if the board, did the planning board adopt that, or did the town board?
No, you guys adopted.
No, the board of trustees adopted. It's a redevelopment plan.
The question becomes, is whether you, as a board here, in terms of the conditions, can limit and expand the uses that, that the applicant is suggesting.
I don't believe there's an opportunity to expand by way of approval.
The, I think the only way you would be able to change to allow office space...
What does the redevelopment's agreement say?
With regards to the uses as defined in the redevelopment plan, not the agreement.
So the, the board of trustees would have to make an amendment to the redevelopment plan, which is basically your ordinance, to allow additional uses. They could probably do it in such a way which, which would allow those additional uses only to be used in the live workspace, without affecting the other spaces in the building.
And I, the only thing that I have a question about is that if the, if the plan is not inconsistent with other provisions of the ordinance, then I'm not sure that those don't remain controlling if there's not an inconsistency.
It's, and there, there is no inconsistency because the live workspace is only defined in this plan.
The easiest way is to redefine live work.
But this is not for this to do.
Or add additional uses strictly for the live workspace.
The only way I think that we can resolve it here is, Meryl, I think the only way you can resolve it here is we have to allow for there to be, we're not going to make a condition about the type of use, because we're not going to change what the plan or the ordinance says. There's live work space, it's defined by the ordinance right now, it can be used for those uses, but we're going to, and I think the applicant will agree that there may come a time in the near future where the village takes a look at the types of uses in the live work spaces and amends the plan, and the applicant would be amenable to that.
Well, okay, we're reading the ordinance differently in the way the plan affects that, since there's a permission for offices as home office or home occupation in any residential zone, so we would, that's not...
As a permitted conditional use, and you have to meet the conditions of professional office.
What are you looking at?
What?
214.
214, right.
Oh, okay, that's, that's... That's a...
It says live work units, it's where a significant portion of the space. Where's the permitted non-residential use?
No, there's a provision that says, that's why I need the ordinance, I need the plan to read it to you. It is use bulk, use and bulk standards are superseded. Any other provision of the ordinance is...
Otherwise, that's what we'll do.
It defaults.
And the, and just getting back to 92 to 14.1, home-based business, that's the one you're referring to? Okay. There are restrictions on that. It's limited solely to office use.
Right.
Uses operated by or employees in resident only.
Right.
Or residents who are permitted, full-time residents, okay? No non-resident employees, customers, or business invitees, or guests shall visit the dwelling unit for business purposes. Okay? So it's, so you can open up a, you know, a little office there, a, you know... So, I'm just, I'm just saying, it's, the way that is written, that's if you have a home-based business and you have a computer, and you work off your computer, or whatever.
So in answer to your question, we can have all the retail use we want in that area.
I think that the, that the board might want to recommend that the trustees take a look at identifying exactly what uses they want to be in the live work spaces, and...
Susan can disagree with me, I don't read this, I don't read that the live workspace is defined in there. You go back to principal permitted uses, but I don't see how the live workspace is considered principal.
No, it's saying...
It's specifically stated as a principal permitted use. When you go back to the definition of live work, which says, a dwelling in which a significant portion of the space includes a permitted non-residential use that is operated by the tenant.
But we haven't defined principal non-residential use.
Yes, they are. Those are, those are the permitted uses listed in the other section of the ordinance, what are permitted uses. If it's not listed as one of those permitted uses in that redevelopment zone, you can't do it.
I think it should, I think they should have been defined separately.
Wait, wait, can I ask a question?
They need them in the ordinance.
What it says here, what it says here in the live work unit says includes a permitted non-residential use. Permitted non-residential use, I mean, maybe I'm wrong here, but permitted non-residential use is not capitalized, meaning if it were a reference to the, to specifically what it defines in here as the permitted non-residential use, it would be capitalized in the same way that permitted non-residential use is capitalized at a later point. And in fact, it doesn't even say permitted non-presidential use. It says principal permitted uses. Principal permitted uses includes multifamily dwellings. Multifamily dwelling is not a non-residential use, so obviously it can't be referring to this list.
Yeah, I, I take it the same way he does. I think, I think we need to find, I don't think we define non-residential units.
As the zoning official, I'm going to tell you right now. We've had this discussion. The only permitted uses in the zone are listed as permitted uses in the zone. They list residential and non-residential uses as the permitted uses in that zone. Those, that's what we have to go by for approving uses going into that space. When you look at the definition of the live work, all right, it basically says permit, a portion of the space can be used for permitted non-residential uses, and then we refer back to that section. Now, that's the way it's written, that's the way it's been adopted by the board of trustees. If the, if you, the board of trustees wants to make a change to that description, make it a little broader, or provide, you know, more opportunities, that's fine, but all we have to go by at this point is that ordinance.
If this, if this planning board votes, if this planning board votes to approve it, and then the board votes to change the redevelopment plan, to amend the redevelopment plan, will the, will the developer be bound by the change, even though it occurs after this? I just want to be clear on that.
As long as those uses have not prior non-conforming status.
I think under the time of application rule, we're vested now.
I think so, too.
I'm sorry, what does that mean?
That about two years ago, the law changed, and instead of an applicant, the uses and bulk standards applicable to their application would become vested upon a vote of approval. The law changed actually about three years ago, but then there was a one-year waiting period, it became effective about two years ago, that the zoning in effect at the time an application is filed is the controlling standard.
So, so, so...
Right, but that doesn't...
The answer is, that if it, if the board, if the board of trustees made a change after the fact, it would not be binding?
No, I don't think so.
You can always change, you can always change your ordinance, Meryl, it's just whether or not you have a prior non-conforming use or not.
I think the difference would be, if, if the trustees want to expand the allowable uses in the zone, then even though the application was approved prior to that, the, the owner of the property would be allowed to expand the, the uses of that property. If they wanted to reduce the allowable, that's what I think the, the law is speaking to, that if, if the trustees said, well, no, you can't have retail in the live workspace later, your application being approved.
I'm not saying you can't change your ordinance, but it's whether it applies or not.
Well, if we reject this, if we reject...
That's correct.
Now, you, now you get to the key, key part of the question. Let's... Let's assume this planning board then decides to reject the application. And then, the board of trustees were to change the redevelopment plan to prohibit the retail uses, would that then change the circumstances? Meaning, right now, what I'm hearing is that if we approve this plan, what...it doesn't matter what happens after the moment we vote for this plan. The fact that the current redevelopment plan says retail uses are allowed, that would mean that there is...that nothing can happen to change that. But if we reject it, the board could vote then to change the redevelopment plan. And then, after going through all this again, you come back, everything will be the same except for that one particular point. Am I correct? Because if so, I'm voting against this application. I'm putting it straight out there. I mean, if we have a problem with retail uses in this space and you're telling me that there is nothing we can do to get rid of the retail uses unless we reject the application, there's my vote.
Okay, well, you're...
If it's just retail uses, I mean, are you going to allow a childcare center in a work...
Yeah, childcare has their own rules. You would never be able to have enough in this space.
That's not my...I don't know what the rules are for childcare.
I think...I think here...
You wrote the ordinance.
Talk about...let's think about this for a minute. And I think, Merrill, I think you'll agree with me. If I have a zone, a piece of property that's zoned for gas station use, I can build a gas station. I don't need a variance, right?
Right.
Okay, but if I don't build a gas station and then the zone gets changed, I can't now say, "Oh, I can build a gas station." Unless I have a prior non-conforming use at the time of change, I've lost my right for that use.
But if I filed an application for a gas station and you then change the zone, I have a right to get an approval for a gas station.
If you did that before...I would agree with you. If you did that before the zone was changed, if you filed an application...
What are you looking...
I agree.
That's why I think we should make...try to make sense of what uses it is that you want there.
Right.
I think we said that we didn't care about the retail. We do care about the office.
That's what we're trying to get for you.
Well, but if the answer is that... If the answer is that they're going to modify it to expand it and we don't have to come back here if we have an approval, and now we can do a home office, the equivalent of a home office or a professional office there, we don't have a problem with that. We already indicated we had been willing to give up the retail even in connection with other permitted uses.
The home office is what the applicant is interested in.
Well, that's what we...the equivalent, professional office...
Professional office.
An accountant in the house, the same example that the board was using.
That was the intent of what we...of what we passed and what the board of trustees had passed. And I took it to mean the resident... But your intent wasn't a childcare center? Forget whether it can get... No, no. No, you see, you're confusing the two things, which is what I think is the thing, is that that's broad-based. They're allowed to have a childcare center on the premises. So if they want to put one in that space in Valley Street, they could put a childcare center in that 3,000 square feet. Oh, yeah, I don't care about that. But for the live-work space, with the...the live-work space, in my opinion, is not clearly defined in that document. And I think that's the mistake. A planner is disagreeing with you.
And your zoning official.
I don't think it's clearly defined the way the board of trustees...
To clarify the process.
I mean, are we phrasing it correctly? It was not clearly defined the way the board of trustees had intended it to be defined.
There are...there are two separate issues. One is an expansion and the other is a restriction. The expansion is to allow office use, which is not clearly allowed. The restriction is not to permit the retail use, which is currently allowed.
In the live-work spaces.
Correct, in the live-work spaces. And what...the expansion of which is no problem. I don't think anybody on either side is objecting to the potential expansion. That would seem...that would seem obvious. What...where the issue comes in is the restriction. And what I'm understanding is that the restriction is...that the restriction, if it can't be voted in after the fact by once...that once this planning board gives its approval, what I'm hearing, and I've now asked this question two or three times, and I think I've gotten the same answer each time, is...or at least what I'm hearing applicant's counsel to say is, is that, "Well, you can't do that. You can't say after the fact..."
Wait, to confirm the process.
We can restrict it right now.
Once we...
You can restrict it...
Once this...wait, wait. Once this is voted upon, if a permit...if someone comes in and would like to open up a shop, they still have to come into our zoning office to do that, or do they not have to?
It's different.
They need to see them. They'll have to...
So if the board of trustees change the ordinance before this person comes in, it doesn't matter?
Uh-uh.
No.
If we approve the application, it's based on the zoning in effect at the time.
Unless it's expanded, as they said.
Even if we're changing...
But I'm talking about the restriction, not the expansion.
We're not identifying what space is available. You're changing that use going into it, saying, "Well, now we want this apartment or condo, whatever, to turn into an accountant's office." That doesn't change the use where you would have to go, or...
You might need a zoning per...you might need to get a building permit to do work inside. You'd need a C of O for someone to occupy it. But the use is controlled by other events that took place prior.
Let me ask a question differently.
Now, can I ask, but isn't the difference...
Let me just ask one of the...
It's unilateral action by the government versus asking us what the applicant will consent to by way of a condition.
I was about to ask.
Well, that was...
That's a different question than can the board and can the governing body action control it? The answer is no, that's not what the law says.
I was about to ask you, if your concern is for professional office, are you willing to waive retail?
It sounds like this...
Yes.
It sounds like we're all in agreement about what we want to do. I don't understand why we're honestly still even discussing this. It sounds like you guys don't really care about the retail. We're okay with professional offices. Can we just figure out a way to put that in here and just move forward?
Because as a matter of law, if they change their mind, it really...after the fact, it really doesn't much matter. That's what I'm saying.
The question is, can we...how can we...what mechanisms are in place legally to allow... to right now decide to move forward with this, allow the professional offices and not allow the retail? What can we do right now?
You can...
What can we do right now to do that?
You can place a...
That's what you guys want too, right?
You can place a...
So what can we do right now?
You can place a restriction, a condition of the approval, that the workspace...the live-work space will not have retail.
Retail.
Okay?
As a primary.
As a...as a, you know, as a use accessory to the live space.
Or incidental, I thought.
Or as an incidental use.
The applicant will...
But the use of the space for professional offices will have to be amended in the redevelopment plan by the board of trustees.
Exactly. Fine, and so you guys are okay with that condition as part of this agreement today?
There was just a...
Let's put the thumbs up on the record.
She just added a covenant.
The only question, we just want to be clear that by prohibiting retail, the same thing we had asked, we don't want to be able to run a retail operation. But if an artist wants to sell a piece of work, we don't want that to be considered retail that's now been conditioned out.
What if a woman wants or a man wants to do a Tupperware store there? That's incidental.
Look, I mean, honestly, we can...
That's retail.
Honestly, we could get to a thousand what-if situation.
Wait, are we restricting or expanding here? It sounds like we're just trying to restrict.
We're trying to restrict.
You can't do that, that's in the ordinance.
Does it?
Can make a condition of the approval...
Yes.
The restriction of not having a retail use in those spaces.
I kind of like the idea of whether or not having a gallery and being able to look at someone's art. I mean, what about a candle shop? Or, I mean, are we just going to say no to all of that?
The idea was to have professional offices here.
Well, I agree, there's professional offices.
Do we...I'm sorry, do we define retail? I mean, what is the definition...what is the legal definition of when we use the word retail?
Retail is...
I mean, does that preclude someone from being able to literally sell something? Or is retail a use where you have your businesses primarily based on, you know, commercial exchange and people coming in and buying things that are on display?
That's what it is.
So...
Or service, or service.
What about if it's...why don't we qualify it? The only kind of retail we're talking about is the item that's produced on site. If someone paints a picture, they can...why is that worse? If they...if they make a sculpture, they should be able to sell that piece of work.
They're not going to be doing high-volume commercial production in a...how many square...
Four hundred.
Yeah, so that by itself is going to limit what people are able to do. If it's produced by the resident in their...in that space. Right, that should be fine with everybody?
I don't think so.
Why not?
Because I think you can reduce an awful lot of jewelry in...
By only having the...
Four hundred square feet. You absolutely could. Go look at some of these kiosks in these operations.
Well, none of them are...I mean, they're...it's a...you're talking about like a kiosk in a mall.
No, no, no.
Sometimes producing a jewelry somewhere else.
I'm just using that as an example, as space. Just look at space.
Okay.
I didn't think the intent here was to have any retail sales whatsoever. It was strictly going to be office for accountants, for doctors, or, you know...
No doctor.
Psychiatrists, whatever.
Actually, to be fair, we did talk about having artists in there too. So, just to be fair, but...
I think you're... And it doesn't sound like that from...I mean, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but from the trustees' perspective or from anybody...any of the discussions in the past, people were concerned with the artists selling jewelry that they made. It's having an actual storefront, an actual retail storefront, that was what people were trying to limit. I don't recall anyone ever being concerned with someone producing some, you know, arts and crafts in their home and selling it to people, you know...
It never came up. It never came up here.
What is the primary concern about retail?
What is your concern?
Retail. My concern is having retail.
Why?
I think it's a parking issue. I don't know what kind of retail you're talking about.
You're talking about...
One space.
You're talking about manufacturing on space.
What, you're talking about a limited amount of space within the unit, which is limited to what was the...
Four hundred square feet.
Four hundred square feet, which is the equivalent of one and one-third parking space based on your retail calculation. In addition to, the person selling the retail has to live there, so they already have their own parking space.
Retail.
It was...
I don't...I was under the impression it was going to be office space. It was never discussed with me.
Well, it was supposed to be professional office space, but artists were considered somewhat professionals and that.
But that's an artist, but that's...okay.
But that was the...
All right, I concede to artists. Now you've got other things that are artists.
But other things weren't...I mean, that was not the intent.
Does a jeweler bond or...
And our mistake was not defining...
So you're saying the intent was not retail?
The...as I...
That's not what the applicant was saying.
As I recall, there was a minimum amount of retail or a maximum amount of retail that the...that the applicant had said, and that was 3,000 square feet.
But that was in...
The... The other portion of that was this concept of live-work that really picked up on the retail as well as other non-residential uses that based upon the concept of live-work that it could be retail and those other uses. And that was the discussion that I understood was part of the overall formation and how the concept of live-work was incorporated into the redevelopment plan.
Excuse me, discussion with who? The town board, the trustees, or the planning board?
That was...it was in the plan when it came to the planning board.
I understand that, but was that the discussion with the trustees?
That was my understanding of some of the comments that came out of the redevenir.
I don't think we can penalize an applicant for conforming with our ordinance.
That's correct.
No, I understand that. I don't have to vote for the ordinance for the applicant.
I don't think that's exactly right, Mike, because there...you can't, I think, in on the record, vote negatively on something that's not right.
Sure, I can. I can vote on that. I can vote down for any reason the application.
I think something that you need to consider as well, though, is that this is in the redevelopment zone, all right? The applicant could have come in with an application that had retail all along Third Street and all along Valley Street running on there.
I don't really have the problem with retail. I have the problem with the fact that we didn't allow for professional offices at the same time.
And I agree that professional offices would be useful.
Let me just finish. Let me just finish.
That's an amendment that the ordinance...
I think the retail is limited by the fact that there's only 400 square feet. And I'm about to see...and obviously no food uses can be allowed, but, you know, the...and the board of health would never allow it anyway. But the...but the certain types of retail just would probably wind up lending themselves, such as a mini art gallery or something. I don't really have a problem with that. I have a problem with, I mean, retail. You don't want a pet food store there, you know, which... But who's going to do that in a 400-foot space? I mean, that's why I just, you know... You may see a mail order business.
You would be surprised at what they could do in 400 square feet.
I also think we need to kind of think about this...
Go look at retail operations.
Last couple of months, this applicant has been, I think, pretty forthcoming on how they can change and kind of help the town.
I know. I understand that. I'm not blaming the applicant.
But I also think they have to also then protect their residents. And so they're not going to allow people to move in who are constructing, you know...
I think the board...the board of trustees is going to have to discuss whether we want to allow the professional offices, which is what we originally had intended.
The applicant, as sterling, could sell the building tomorrow.
Okay, so I would suggest...
Well, I think we should move on. If you have a concern with retail, you have to vote according to that.
I do.
To me, this is a...
I don't know how you solve the situation.
A plan that's been developed by this board, that has been approved by the trustees, that has been complied with with the applicant, so we should move on because...
I agree.
At this point, see how you can decide otherwise.
Okay, so we're on condition number nine. What else? Patrick? With our post $25,000, we improve some third and valley. They'll paint the crosswalk at the signalized station of Sloan and Third. That's been put on the plans already, right? Crosswalk's on the plans now.
Yes.
Install the full sign at the external entrance to the parking structure. That's on the plans now, right?
The sign's on the parking structure.
The full sign, full sign. Sign that says full on the sign.
If it isn't, we'll check it in either...if it hasn't been, it will be on the compliance set.
Illuminated signage at the location of the public exit gate to stop traffic from oncoming residential parkers.
I think that was in the exhibit to the June 26 letter from Mr. Helmer.
Right. Scooter parking on the first level now.
It's shown on there.
Continuing to speak with New Jersey Transit about extending the platform. Probably not going to happen.
I think that's dead.
Doesn't exist.
I thought they...I think that was a dead issue. That was a dead issue, wasn't it?
That the signage package is sufficiently detailed despite the lack of graphics, provided that the graphics that are eventually proposed meet with the ordinance.
Right. If they don't, we'll have to...
All revisions that are set forth in the plans are in the review letters, rather. All other approvals. A smaller blade sign, as discussed tonight, not to exceed 20 square feet. And the event the transformers currently shown on the plans in an exterior location adjacent to the retail space are relocated underground, the subject area may be improved and used for pedestrian plaza without further action. I thought that was already dead. I thought that transformer issue was already decided.
Well, apparently, there's...we're only concerned that if they change their position, we haven't done anything with the area. If they should change...if the utilities should change their position and we have to put it underground, when we take it away, we just want to be able to improve it as a plaza, part of the pedestrian plaza, without having to come back for the sake of a few square feet. for the sake of a few square feet.
All right. Getting back now to Amelin's conditions. Widen the loading dock driveway apron to facilitate truck movements. Is that done?
Uh, you need to submit it. So we agreed that we were.
Agreed to that, okay. Cost estimates for the bond, that'll be submitted. Timing changes, you'll work on the timing changes for the signalization on Third and Valley. Clean the downstream inlets and those in the adjacent site.
That would be a note on the plans. We've been, we haven't gotten, we set the revised plans.
Okay. Pay on escrow fees, consolidate the lots. Engineer's estimate.
I don't really know what it is than I'm saying what he said. I mean, I, I can't possibly offer that as a resolution. There are, there were like 27 conditions of which I tried to write down and, and I got to number 16 and I kind of quit because I couldn't write down most of what he was saying. So what, I, the only thing I can say is what he said. And other than that, I have no way of offering a resolution. So, I mean, quite frankly, quite frankly, I, I don't want to stretch this out to another meeting, but I'll just say, under normal conditions, I would not want to offer any resolution because I can't articulate what's being said here. I can only basically say what I said, which sounds foolish. And I don't like doing that. But having said that, if Patrick wants to just tell me how many conditions there were, I will be willing to say that we all listened to them and that it's.
Some of those conditions are already taken care of. We're not repeating it. That's, that's why I got confused.
Well, but, right, so, so again.
As I just proposed. How are you handling the, the work you have, what issue?
Well, that's, well, you're going to have to, you're going to have to decide how you want to vote on that. So it's.
I thought we were putting a condition in there for the, to, to restrict the retail and that we were going to, at some point, move forward with the trustees and talk about expanding. That was my understanding.
Wait, restrict specific retail, or?
Well, I think that's something that we could probably work on, Merrill. Is there a way that we can restrict retail that will make this board and this applicant comfortable?
Well, wait, wait. Taking away retail as a whole, is that going to make this board? I mean, I don't think, no, I don't, I don't agree with that.
It's what it sounded like we were all in favor of, except for Michael.
I thought so too. That we were going to take away the retail. I think the proposed one, the proposed.
Art galleries, jewelry.
It was going to be.
Right, but I think, I think, I think the difference was that, that the definition of retail, I think there was maybe some confusion. And for example, I don't see someone having a home, like jewelry-making business where they sell them online, for example. But every once in a while, someone comes physically into their space to buy it. That is not retail.
Yes, it is. If you have people coming into the space.
So one person a month visiting your space, buying a product from you, qualifies you as a retail business?
If you, if you have a sign and the door is open to the public and people can come in, then it's a retail.
I don't think anybody is concerned about that. I think what people are concerned about is someone opening a store and saying, "I've got a store here and we're open nine to five. Come visit us." That's what people don't want.
But a gallery can do that.
But a gallery could do that as well.
That's a gallery.
I, I'm not sure that that.
Come visit me Saturday.
I, I'm not sure that why that's such a concern to have the retail on that.
I don't have a concern.
I mean, if you wanted to, if you wanted to restrict it, no restaurants or no cafes.
I'm sorry, can we please have one conversation at a time? Sal is speaking.
Um, but I'm not sure what the concern is of actually having retail, you know, in very small space on Third Street. It's, you know, you're across the street from, you know, two banks. You know, you're, you're in a, in the commercial zone of the village.
And your point earlier was that that could have been all entire retail storefronts anyway. It would have been perfectly acceptable.
That would have been, that would have been acceptable. So I think if, if your concern is restricting retail, then maybe if you're afraid of a restaurant or something like, I mean, which is likely not going to happen because of the Board of Health issues and all those other things, you know, and, and spaces are very, very small. But if you wanted to limit that, that would be one thing. But I don't think the concern so much is the retail as the concern of, of having the ordinance changed to allow professional offices, which is, I think, what the intent was originally.
I think, Mr. Chairman.
I think it's just an expansion.
I don't think you have an unanimity of opinion on this board. And I think that however the resolution is proposed, there will be a vote against it one way or the other and that a resolution needs to be proposed and the vote needs to be taken. So I don't think you're going to get total unanimity. I don't mind proposing the resolution either way. Or if somebody else wishes to make the resolution, can vote on it that way. But one way or the other, you have one member who feels retail should be an acceptable use, you have one member who feels it shouldn't, at least. And then there are perhaps differences around the board. I, we, we can sit here until we're blue in the face going around in circles. But what I see is there is a difference, there is a difference of opinion and it's okay if we don't vote unanimously for a particular resolution. So let's have the resolution and have a vote and move on.
Look, I just have a question. How are you handling offices which are not permitted now, is what I've heard.
The only way you can have them is if the ordinance is amended to allow professional offices in. Which is something that the Board of Trustees has to take on.
Which you're saying we're allowed to do.
The board, yes, the trustees have to do.
It looks like the applicant has an idea.
I just have an idea, just throwing it out there. You know, we're assuming the ordinance is going to be amended, no matter what, anyway, because of this whole office thing. If the village trustees, in their, you know, wisdom and judgment, decide that some retail may be permitted as a result of the legislative process, then I think that, you know, we're willing, as an applicant, to defer that we will not, we will not, you, we stipulate that we won't use the retail provisions that are currently listed in the ordinance and will wait until that ordinance is amended. And whatever limited scale retail with a very specific and fine-grained definition, that that's what we would abide by.
So the condition tonight would be to agree to a fourth public definition of what retail space is?
And that we will not pursue retail unless and until that happens.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
I think, and something the board needs to consider too, it's, it's not the, it's not the plan, is not necessarily the planning board's purview to determine that the permitted uses, that that's what the purpose of the ordinance and the redevelopment plan was. It was to determine what the permitted uses were.
But I think we can accept there.
And as a matter of the process, that comes back to you. Right? I mean, every time you develop.
Right, and you'll have an opportunity to come.
You'll get to see.
The Board of Trustees doesn't have to accept their recommendation for the post-baptist.
Is that, is that a fair condition?
Yeah, if they propose it and you agree, sure.
But I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the comment that was made by counsel, by Ms. Gonchar, earlier about the fact that, about the, about the rules that were in effect at the time, like two years ago. The rules that were in effect two years ago said what it says in this plan. So what I'm saying is, is that can the, can the, I mean, look, we can talk about what can be done in good faith.
The applicant can give up that right. We can vet.
You can give up that right.
Absolutely.
You can give up that right in the form of a statement and it can be, the statement here is sufficient, that if we then put it in there, that's enough. Okay, that's fine, I think.
Did you make the resolution?
I don't know. I don't know. I, I. So.
Why doesn't that just repeat the resolution that you have just made?
I, I think that I, I already stated what the conditions were that had to be resolved. Apart from the fact with the live-work space, there seems to be an understanding that the applicant would stipulate to the condition in the, if there was an approval, that the amount of retail space would be limited to a further clarification, whatever that may be, by the Board of Trustees of what the redevelopment plan will allow in this zone.
And also that we've, put it this way, that we've indicated a, a desire, we'd understand knowing this, this board doesn't control it, that, to allow office in that space.